Welcome everyone to the January 22nd, 2020, meeting of the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. We have a deceptively small number of items on our agenda tonight, but I think we're going to be here awhile, so we'll get through them as quickly as we can. First, we have to start out with a couple of business items. So everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the December 16th minute meeting? Any changes, amendments, alterations, a motion? I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Weaver. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ashworth. All those in favor? Ten zero. Do we have any committee reports this month?
Actually, yes.
Ah, Commissioner Payton.
The downtown master plan steering committee met for the second time on the 13th. I was going to have my notes all ready, but I kind of forgot we met. So we are meeting three times, and this was the second. The last time we met was a year and three months ago. Yeah, so it's been a longer process, I think, than they realized. And we just discussed existing conditions and what we have downtown, and now they're getting ready to start working on the plan, sort of the guts. And one of the things that just keeps, that stands out, so I won't go through the entire, entirety of what we discussed, but one of the things that stands out is we discussed downtown parking and perception of lack of parking, or whether we actually have lack of parking and what exists. So in coming months, I think we, it's July or August, we will meet again with sort of a chance to look at the guts of the plan, so.
Any others? There is only one other. Do we have any written communications from the public that didn't make it into the packet? Okay. Any written communications from staff, planning commissioners, or other commissioners?
No.
No? Any written action of any waiver requests or determinations made by the city engineer? We do not. Now we need a disclosure of any ex parte communications. Any commissioners have had any contact outside of this room on any items? If you just tell us the general nature and with whom it was. Commissioner Ashworth?
I had a conversation with Kim Bellamere and Jennifer Delisle regarding definition of Prairie, and those issues are reflected in the staff memo that we were seeing.
Okay. Any others?
I had a meeting, attended a meeting with the Big Springs area group at the church there, middle of the month, and were able to hash out a lot of their concerns, I think, that the citizens there had, and Mary and Tanya were there as well, and Jim.
I was also at that meeting, and pretty much what the end result of that meeting is reflected in the memo that's included in our agenda packet tonight. Anyone else? Commissioner?
I had a conversation with Tanya clarifying the rezoning for hair strips.
Commissioner Sands?
I had just an email exchange with the Breen family regarding item number three on the agenda. They had some questions, I referred them to staff.
Okay, great. I just asked when we get to those items if anything comes up that we don't hear that you heard, if you could just add that to our discussion at that time. Anyone going to abstain from any specific agenda items tonight? Good. At this time, we open the floor to general public comment. At this time, any member of the public can come up. You have three minutes. You can speak on any item you want, as long as it's not on our agenda tonight that's related in some way to land use. So are there any members of the public that would wish to speak? Seeing none, that'll take us to item number one. Consider a request to rezone approximately 1.33 acres located at 3727 West Sixth Street.
Chair, can I just remind everybody to speak just a little bit clearly into the microphones?
I thought I was closer to it, but okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mary Mueller, one of the planning staff, and this rezoning request is for a property at 3727 West Sixth Street. The request is to rezone from a planned commercial development into a current base zoning district, the CN2 district. The property is located on the southeast corner of Comet Lane and West Sixth Street. It's about 1.33 acres, and it's about halfway between Monterey Way and Castle Drive. The property is currently developed. It has a multi-tenant building, which includes a beauty salon, and there's a locksmith and a home and business security system, and there's also auto sales with the requirement that the auto display all be inside the building. And that's the reason that they're requesting this rezoning, is they'd like to display some vehicles outside of the building. It's bounded by many storage on the west. There's multi-dwellings, I'm sorry, this is backwards, so it's really many storage on the left of the picture here, which is east. Multi-dwelling behind them, there's an office building across Comet Lane, and then there's residential across Sixth Street. So there's a mix of uses in the area. This is part of the Monterey, Sixth Street, Monterey Way plan development, which is a unique plan development in that it developed in phases, and each phase had its own list of restricted uses. And auto sales was not permitted when it was originally adopted. So a few years back, maybe 10 years ago, a preliminary development plan was brought through and a rezoning request in order to add auto sales, and they kept interior sales only, interior display only. And one of the reasons the Monterey plan development was restricted like that was to maintain the commercial neighborhood. The comprehensive plan has already identified this area as a neighborhood commercial center, and so they didn't want all the uses that are allowed in a planned commercial district. So that's why the uses were restricted in the first place. The CN2 is a true neighborhood commercial center zoning district. It was intended and developed primarily for those uses, and so there wouldn't be no need to condition the uses if it was adopted. This shows the zoning in the area. The Monterey, Sixth and Monterey PCD is primarily this area. The hatched areas are those which have had use restrictions by zoning ordinance. The other portions of the district, they're just restricted by notes on the preliminary development plan. So this property with the rezoning to CN2 would remove itself out of this planned development. The property to the west was removed earlier, but it was zoned to another PCD. That is the Sixth and Comet Lane PCD. This is something of a lateral zoning move. It's not going to a more intense or less intense district, it's just going to a current zoning district. And one of the benefits to that is you don't have to do a preliminary development plan for planning and city commission approval, and then a final development plan. The applicant is able to just submit a site plan for any future changes. This shows the land uses in the area. Primarily, we have commercial uses located along Sixth Street, and then we have less intense uses further away from Sixth Street with the multi-dwelling on the south. Across Sixth Street, as we noted, there is a single-family residential. And within the PCD, there are some industrial uses. Other golden factors we look at is, does the request conform with the recommendations in the comprehensive plan? And Plan 2040 also identifies this area as a neighborhood commercial center, and so the rezoning request would conform with that. Removal of the restrictions, allowing the outdoor display of vehicles would not create detrimental effects on nearby properties. The property is developed, it has parking around the building, just some of the parking spaces would contain display cars rather than just customers' cars. So there should be almost no physical change with this rezoning request. If approved, the applicant would need to submit a site plan to show where the parking spaces would be, and that would allow us to ensure we do have adequate parking, we're not, you know, taking away required parking. And so since there would be no detrimental effect with the approval of the rezoning, there'd be no gain to the public health, safety, or welfare through the denial. And so staff recommends approval of the rezoning request and forwarding it to the city commission with a recommendation for approval based on the findings in the staff report. And I believe the applicant is here today, I don't.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions for Mary? Initial questions before we hear from the applicant? Hearing that, if the applicant would like to come forward and give us your thoughts.
Hi, I'm Dave Rouschoff. Thanks for having me here. I think you have all the information in writing. I don't have anything to add to it, other than my plan is only to have four parking spaces for some lower-priced used cars. I'm rather semi-retired in the business, I want to keep my dealer license, and we have plenty of excess spaces. And as it says in the application, there will be no signs, no banners, no flags. It's just me putting out a few lower-priced cars for people that I can help that need that type of vehicle. So that's all it is. I've owned the building since, well, I built the building in 2005, and so unless there's any other questions, it's just that simple. Four spaces out in the corner just to park some cars. And I have an office in the building. The state licensed me last January at that location, more or less subject to getting the zoning done, which at the time I thought would take a couple of months. So I've learned. Any questions?
Not right now, but there might be, so we'll call you back up if there are questions.
Thank you.
This time, we open this matter up to the general public for comment. Anyone who wishes to comment on this particular item, please come up to the podium, sign in, and please try to limit your comments to the three-minute clock over here. Anyone wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back up to the commission. Does anyone want to start? No. Commissioner Sinclair?
One question, and this might be for Mr. Rouschoff. Would you be able to come back to the podium, sir, so I can ask you a question?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Can you come back to the podium, just so I can ask you a quick question, just so we can hear you? You indicated that you'd be planning on parking the cars on the corner. Is that in the, can you kind of describe that a little more clearly?
As far as the parking?
Right.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't know the exact numbers, but I think we have 18 or so more spaces than are required when it was built in 2005. But I just plan, and those exact spaces are somewhere on your information. There's four spaces, and I don't even know if I would often have even four cars, sometimes between zero and four, but they would just be parked there to show people and test drive.
Sure.
It would not be in any way like what I did for the last 15 years, which is a traditional car dealership with signs and flags and stickers and that sort of thing.
But just to.
And I'm willing to commit to that, that there's no advertising or that type of thing.
I just, I'm trying to get, I just want to be clear that I know what you're proposing. The cars will be in the lot that's to the south of the building. Is that right?
That, well, it's actually, yes, the southwest corner of the parking lot.
Okay. That was, that was the only question I had.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or perhaps a motion?
A question from staff. Mr. Rouschoff wanted to sell his business, and another car dealer wanted to display more than four cars, wanted to include signs, banners, and yet more traditional. Is there anything inherent in this request with how the cars are displayed, or how many cars are displayed? And if that were to change hands, would it require any further action?
Right. That wouldn't be determined with the rezoning. Right now, you're just saying, yes, you can display cars outside. So when the site plan comes through, that's when we look at how many parking spaces are there. And we don't usually restrict signage, that goes through a separate sign permit. And so I don't know if that would be an issue. That's not something I'd even thought of, you know, whether or not that would be an issue with the site. But if he sold it to someone else, and they wanted to display more cars than he has, they would need to revise the site plan. And that way, we can always make sure that we have enough parking.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Ashworth?
I'm taking the motion.
Sure.
I move that we recommend approval of the request to rezone approximately 1.33 acres from PCD District to CN2 District based on the findings presented in the staff report and forwarding to the city commission with a recommendation for approval.
I have a second. A second by Commissioner Payton. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? S is ten zero. Thank you. Item number two, consider a conditional use permit for Honeybee Septic located at 1462 North 1700 Road.
I'm Catherine Week, one of the planners in the planning department, and I have this conditional use permit before you tonight for the location at 1462 North 1700 Road. So this is the general location in North Lawrence. It's just to the east of the North Second Street corridor, just kind of south of Interstate Surrounding zoning for the area, this is currently zoned County A. It is right on the edge of the city limits. I'll have an image showing that here in a minute. And the zoning surrounding this area is primarily residential. There's some RS-10, RS-7, and then there is some commercial zoning along North Second Street, along that North Second Street corridor. Surrounding land use for the area, this will show you kind of what is currently being used there. Primarily, it is ag and residential. The pale yellow is residential, as is the gold-yellowish color, which is multifamily residential. The commercial is located, again, to the west, and that's along that North Second Street corridor there. So the key points of this application that's before you, the applicant would like to do some truck storage on the property. This would be for the Honeybee Septic business. There is a accessory structure on the west portion of the property that they're proposing to utilize for the truck storage. As I said, the property is currently zoned A, so that use would only be permitted in the zoning district by a conditional use permit. This area is located in the northeast sector plan, which designates the property as very low residential and open space for the floodplain, which is also located on this particular property. The property is adjacent to the city limits, as I've said, and staff is making the determination that this CUP request does not meet most of the golden criteria, which I will go over here in a moment. We did receive communications about this particular application. Most of the communication came in for when this item was scheduled at a previous meeting. We have all of those, as well as a letter of support. There are additional letters that came in for the recent scheduling of this item were from the Cal Valley Drainage District, and then two neighbors also sent additional letters in, which I believe you have. So review criteria for conditional use permits, we based that on the golden factors. We're always looking at the zoning and the uses of the nearby property. As I mentioned, this is County Ag, and the northeast sector plan, comprehensive plan, have designated that as agricultural uses and very low-density residential. We also look at the character of the area. The character of the area is primarily residential, some very large residential lots, formerly ag property most likely with farmhouses, and then residential within the city limits. There is, again, commercial on that North Second Street corridor. The unique aspect of this particular property is also buffered by the floodway and the floodplain, which is between that North Second Street corridor and those commercial uses and the neighborhood or the area where this property is located. We also look at the length of time that the property has been vacant. This particular property is not vacant. It does have a residential structure on the property. As I said, the accessory structure that is on the east side of the property, which is the one that they're recommending using, and then there is another accessory structure located on the property that was built as an accessory structure to the residential structure that's there. So this particular property, as I said, is not vacant. It's currently, the residential and accessory structures are in conformance with the northeast sector plan, the comprehensive plan. They could continue and be suited to the restricted uses of this particular zoning district. We also look at public gain as compared to hardship to the landowner if the application was denied. Staff feels that the hard, or the public gain in denying the application would potentially be greater than the hardship to the landowner to be able to use the property as it is zoned or designated. Staff does feel there are some detrimental effects to nearby property. There'd be increased traffic, increased noise. Some of these are expressed in the staff report, as noted, and also the neighbors have concerns about some of these issues as well, which were in the communications. And the northeast sector plan is referenced in our comprehensive plan. And again, this area is designated, this particular property is designated in the very low-density residential and the floodplain area where it is designated as open space. So here's an aerial image of that floodplain area. The property is highlighted in teal. The floodway is the darker red area that traverses to the west, and then the regulatory floodplain is primarily, about two-thirds of the property is located in that regulatory floodplain. The proposed accessory structure that they would use for the truck storage or proposing to use is not located in the floodplain. But this is an aerial image showing you where that floodplain is located. And this is relevant to the northeast sector plan, which is this image here, which shows you those designated open space areas, which does encompass that whole floodplain area. And as part of that northeast sector plan, there was extensive evaluation about stormwater runoff, floodplain, or stormwater management, floodplain, floodway, and it was determined that floodway and floodplain should remain as open space, and that was part of the goals of the northeast sector plan. So this is the area showing you exactly where the city limits are. That's the purple area. The property is kind of tucked right into the corner there. It borders the city limits. This is relevant because if this property were to annex into the city to accommodate this particular use, anytime there's annexation, you would also rezone the property to city zoning district. To accommodate this particular use, the zoning district would have to permit fleet storage, which is the equivalent of county truck storage facility. And as I said, this is designated very low-density residential, and so the zoning districts in the city that could accommodate fleet storage are things like industrial, general industrial limited, some commercial strip areas. This particular area, it would be hard to support a zoning district accompanying an annexation where it doesn't conform to the comprehensive plan or the northeast sector plan. This is a proposed aerial image of the site. I'll use my mouse here if it can show up. This structure here, as I said, to the east, is the structure they're proposing to use as that truck storage for the Honeybee Septic vehicles. So if the conditional use permit is approved, staff is listing a few conditions that would be recommended at minimum. There may be more based on new discussions, but these would be at minimum what staff would recommend if the conditional use permit were approved, and that would be to remove the temporary closure and permanently close that west access point. That was a condition placed by the County Board of Zoning Appeals. They received a setback variance for that accessory structure, the new one, and as part of that discussion, the County Board of Zoning Appeals had put that condition on their approval. So staff would support that as well, carrying that forward. And then those remaining access points would be, we would recommend that they be constructed to city standards. The north portion of the roadway is in the county, the south portion is in the city. So the increased traffic, the city engineer is recommending that those other access points, if they're going to be coming in and out of those, they should be up to city standards. So that is a condition that staff is recommending. And that any activity would be limited to regular weekday business hours. Those particular hours might be determined, maybe seven to seven, I don't know what those would be, but not weekend hours, considering the neighborhood, the residential character. Staff would be recommending normal business hours. And then any exterior storage that should be removed, this conditional permit application is only for the truck storage. It's not for exterior storage or any contractor yard-type use, and so that exterior storage, staff is recommending that be, any remaining be removed. And then the gravel, if, if, as part of the permitting, Douglas County determines that they would need a floodplain permit for the grade change or any gravel that they have put down or need to put down, that that would be addressed, and it would meet the Douglas County floodplain regulations. So those are the conditions staff would be recommending at minimum. Other action required if you are to recommend approval, it does go before the county commission, and then any submitted building primitive changes are to be made. As far as this application goes, they're not suggesting there are any additional changes. They would just be utilizing that eastern structure. And staff is recommending denial of this CUP application because it does not, in staff's opinion, meet the majority of criteria for the golden factors. And I would be happy to stand for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Catherine. Any questions before Catherine takes a seat, and then we'll come back later to answer questions?
Yeah, yeah.
This time, will the applicant care to come forward and?
You got it on there?
Yeah, I got it there. Thank you. Paul Warner with Paul Warner Architects. Got a fairly unique one here for you. This land, it's only 1.7 acres, so I appreciate Catherine and I have been discussing a lot of options on this property. The Polk's have really done a good job. I have more letters from neighbors about cleaning this up. It was, as you mentioned, a single-family residence that somebody had collected lots of cars and tires and trash, and probably impeded the floodplain greatly more than what they've done. So I think there are more letters in your packet from neighbors that appreciated everything they've done. Polk's are looking for a place to park two or three Honeybee Septic trucks. This seemed like a great location because of its close access to North Second Street. There is actually more industrial zone ground further east, so when we talk about traffic, this is actually getting the trucks to North Second Street and other areas quicker than if they parked much further into North Lawrence, further east, on another industrial ground. So we saw that as a good thing. We did discuss other options about possibly annexation and/or zoning, and then obviously in with city zoning, or even zoning it with some other county zoning. There's I-1, I-2 in the area. But those would be more permanent fixes, for the lack of a better word, which is why we actually like the CUP. It's conditional, hence the conditional use permit. It can be revoked, it can be changed, it can have a time limit. Clearly, I think you're going to hear, we don't believe the neighbors to the east are ready to annex it. We feel a little bit caught between the city and the county. I don't think the city wants it. I don't, and it's in the county, and I think the county directed the Polk's thinking the CUP was the right answer, and almost thought this was going to be a formality and an easier answer. But we do land on the idea that a conditional use permit can have a three-year, or a five-year, or a one-year term. It can be revisited if any of the conditions are broken, or situation changes, or whatever. It is a conditional permit, as opposed to a zoning and a site plan. It is an odd, it's 1.7 acres, it's not a great location for a single-family detached home, at least in our opinion. You're going to see some of the neighboring driveway into this property. You know, it is off North Second You know, it is off North Second Street. It is much more commercial than what we're talking about. We think, again, think the Pokes have done a great job cleaning up the property. And this is a view of the site. The trucks are parked in the back or in the storage building. You can barely see one if you're looking through there. There's a pretty good screen of trees. So again, we don't, we understand planning staff's concern. I think they've got to be struggling a little bit with this, or they wouldn't have given you conditions if you approve it. Usually, we, we don't get to see conditions if, if you're going to approve something that they're actually recommending to be denied. You know, I realize it's not perfect, but again, we, we like the idea of the CUP with the time limit. And when the neighbors to the east want to annex, and it all comes into the city, and it all gets changed, all those things can be addressed somewhere in the future. But we do think this is a better answer for getting these trucks closer to North Second Street and actually out of North Lawrence more than they operate now. Happy to answer any questions, or we can listen to all people here and see what you got.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Probably will be questions after the public comment.
Perfect. Thank you.
This time, we'll open this matter up for public comment. Any member of the public that wishes to address this particular topic, please come to the podium, sign in, state your name clearly for us. And please limit your comments to three minutes. So who would like to start?
Does this operate? Am I able to display some photographs? Okay. May I give to you, Mr. Chairman, letters that I've written that should be enough to be passed out among all the members of the commission?
Well, actually, the time to submit those is past, but what you can do is provide them the staff, and they'll be in the packet that's forwarded to the county commission.
Okay. This is addressed to you today. I learned yesterday of the cutoff. I tried communicating on Monday, but as we all know, Martin Luther King. Can I submit this as part of the record today, as part of the record?
It will be part of it when it goes forward.
Okay.
Right now, you can let us know what the gist of it is.
I sure will.
This is from Cal Valley?
No. This is from clients that live directly east. Okay, real good. I realize my time is limited. My letter outlines my position. I should state upfront, I'm an attorney in Lawrence, Kansas. Ron Schneider is my name. And I represent Wayne Havercamp and Natalia Lothar. Wayne lives directly east of the property, adjacent to, and Ms. Lothar resides three lots over. I do think there needs, I, I needed some clarification at least. It is my understanding that there were a number of letters in opposition, including the drainage district. Is that correct? Okay, I wasn't sure if you said they were in support. The letter I presented to is part of the record complements the staff's report because they agree with me. And the staff report, I think, covered all the essential components and analysis, commonly referred to as the golden rules. Every one of those would be violated or opposed and contradicted by this application. Most important, safety. And one of the pictures I want to show you, we have, which has not been discussed, and I am of the opinion that the presentation in these photographs that were previously displayed misrepresented the actual neighborhood and the proximity to a playground directly across the street, which belongs to the trailer court. That playground hopefully can be seen in this photograph. And let's see if it projects well. Is that one? Yeah, that does a pretty good job. And that playground is right here. This is the subject property. That playground is utilized by the children who live at the trailer court. The next picture I want to show you is the view that my client has directly from his house. And this, this is, of course, Mr. Havercamp. The small lunged trees, those are the trees or stubs right now that are on the other side of the property. This property has currently stored a number of vehicles on the site. And here are some other photographs from the street. It's not as tranquil and as pristine as we are led to believe by some people. Here is the trailer court across the street. Here are some of the views of the junk that's still remaining on the property, as viewed from my client's property. There's some other storage materials. They are not just trucks, trucks on the property. You are presented with an application that attempts to violate every principle of zoning and planning we know. It's an insult to the Northeast Sector Plan. It's an insult to the comprehensive plan. It's an insult to the current zoning. One of the things that's not being discussed thoroughly, or has not been presented thoroughly, the applicant has created this self-imposed hardship. They purchased this property with the residents, applied to have it remodeled, and they were caught by the county for trying to transform it into an office. This so-called accessory garage is not an accessory garage. It's a commercial garage. It's nothing at all that would be considered residential. I ask, why haven't they been cited with violations? They come to you without clean hands. They come to you in a situation where they have showed total disregard for the law and application. This should be considered by you in this application. We're told about all these good faith things that they're going to do. Based upon past record, past performance, that has to be viewed very, very skeptically. For all the reasons cited in the report, I urge you to deny this application. I think it's the proverbial no-brainer, but it's not the first time I've been wrong. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. May very well be questions.
May I submit these photographs as well, as part of the record?
If you give them to Catherine, they'll give them the packet.
Okay, I will do that. Yeah.
Any other members of the public wish to comment?
Hi, my name is Mindy Cassin, and I own the property, two properties over, towards the east of the Pokes and Higgins. And I basically just wanted to comment and say that I think they fixed the place up. I think it looks a lot better. And I have no, I don't oppose to them doing what they need to do to store their vehicles there. And I think they did a great job of trying to clean our neighborhood up, so, as well as what I'm trying to do with my property. So I just want to say I was for them to be able to park their vehicles there. And don't see that there's any harm in what they're trying to do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Diane Menze. I live at 509 North Street, which is about, what, one, two, three, four, five properties down from the particular thing. I actually talked to the people when they first bought the property, and they have tremendously cleaned it up. I'm also a member of the North Lawrence Improvement Board, and I'm also on the board. Just wanted to let you know that I constantly am outside on my property, and there has been no traffic that I've noticed. And by putting the gravel down, which I know nothing about the Northeast Sector, I know nothing about the gravel stuff, I just know that there's a lot more truck traffic that goes down that road that is not a part of that property. And I would also like to know how many CUPs have actually been granted, opposed, or even applied for on that, because I know North Lawrence landscape is county. I don't know how many of you know that just about every other property on there is city, county, city, county, city, county. My home is actually in the city because it was divided in 1996. I had it surveyed. There's a sheep farm behind me, and there's a rural road with huge puddles of water that doesn't have very much flood control, puddle control, or anything else that is constantly up and down that road. There's a condemned house with no legal water supply, I understand, in between 501 and 509. And the Higgins that live to the east of me, the front of their property is in the city, the back half is in the county. So this is totally just the most unusual street in Lawrence. And the neighbors, as far as I know, we don't have very many problems in the neighborhood. I go to almost every North Lawrence meeting. I have had no comments except once for the Pokes cleaning up the property. You could not even stand to be near that property. I don't know anything about legal, this and that, or anything like that. All I know is it has tremendously improved the look of that property and how has it affected our neighborhood. And I drive by there probably five times a day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional members of the public?
Yeah, I'm David Kraus. I own property at 518 North Street. I bought the property to build a house about three years ago. That property was horrible when we bought it. It was something I had considered driving by daily and looking at. Since the Pokes had bought it and fixed it up, I think it's a, an extreme difference. I, I see everything they do there. I approve everything that they've got going on. I just wanted to make a comment.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jackie Houts, and I own several investment properties in the area, both residential and industrial. And I am for, in favor of them operating or parking the honeybee trucks there. The previous owner of the property ran a trucking company out of there for 20-plus years, Allen Ball Trucking and Smith Trucking, which they had a considerable amount of dump trucks that were in and out and parked there on the property. The contiguous property to the west is a mechanic shop for large trucks, which you could have seen on the, I believe it was the white building that they had there on the photos. So I have no objection to it. I am also a real estate agent, and my opinion is that they have done a great job of cleaning the property, making it more eye appealing, and that parking just a few trucks there is not going to affect the land values of the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back up to the commission. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Willie?
Mr. Chair, forgive me, I should have disclosed this earlier with the ex parte. My husband does serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the county, and they did hear this item. So I had heard about it at home after that fact. And the only issue that would be additional to the information we already have is that it seemed there were some compliance issues about whether the house was being used as a residence, which was a requirement for building the new building as accessory to the residence. So.
And we see from what's been presented as today that that was an issue, and the county's now deemed that it's in compliance with the county code as a residence, correct? Okay. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Butler?
I don't have questions for staff, but I do have questions for the applicant.
Mr. Warner, would you come up?
Mr. Warner, when you're talking about two to three trucks, do you have any pictures of what you're actually talking about? And then can you pull back up the diagrams that you used and show where you would envision these trucks being parked?
Yeah, I may need, um, let's see. Can, you want to get me back to the site plan that's on, you have it on here? So this is the building to the east.
Can you make that bigger?
Yeah, I can try.
Sorry.
I know. Well done. Sorry, draw buildings. Usually, but by hand, sorry. So this building on the east is right there. And the one, there's space for one or two trucks outside behind the existing home. To the lawyer's point, certainly, if the screening needs to be approved or something like that, that can be done. But the, the plan is to keep them out of the view from the street and behind the residence.
So you saw the pictures that Mr. Schneider had put up? Was the, looking at his pictures, kind of, I guess that we're supposed to be kind of some fence, or there was no screening. Is that what you're talking about, as far as screening?
Yeah, we can screen that east property line, obviously. It looked like that truck would have been pulled in front of that building to the east.
Okay. And then how big are the trucks that your client's proposing to?
Thirty feet, thirty, thirty-five feet. And there's no work that's being done there. Obviously, they're, they work on septic systems, so this is really just about parking the vehicles there.
So do the vehicles have stuff in them, or are they empty?
I think they load them, take them somewhere else, and then come back and park them.
So there's not, like, trucks full of sewage sitting around?
Correct. There is not.
It's, it's really hard when we have comment from the back. We need to let the people at the podium speak. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go. Is there a maximum number of trucks that would be proposed?
We've listed three. They only own four or five.
Five?
Yes. So I guess the, the maximum would be five. But the, right now, they're only parking three there.
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Well, I, one or two other questions. Is there, one of the letters suggested that city water is connected to that property. Is city water connected?
City water is connected, but they are paying the water bill. There is, they are not getting free city water. We're not sure where that.
I wasn't implying that. I'm just trying to get a handle on this area that's, when you've got half of the road that's county and half that's city and properties that don't seem to follow any rhyme or reason down, that's, that.
It's very unique, as somebody said.
Well, it looks like, you know, it's, it's ripe for annexation. And I'm just wondering, eventually, that's going to happen.
Again, I think that's, I think that's why we like the idea of the CUP. And I think, right now, I think if you ask the city, they would tell you that they don't, I don't think they want it. But, but sooner or later, I would agree, it should be annexed.
Well, my, my comment is just based on Plan 2040, which is going to encourage that. And many of the requirements are already met, since there are city services right there, and it's contiguous. And it looks like it's going to get captured one way or the other, whether it happens directly to that property or happens around that property. It's eventually going to be captured.
Eventually. Yes, I'd, I'd agree with that.
All right. Mr. Willie?
Oh, my question is just to follow up. If only two or three of the trucks are being stored here, is there another facility or another site that Honeybee is using for the other trucks?
They own other commercial ground, industrial ground further east. But again, we saw that as being bad, that that's just the more trucks traveling on this road or Lyons Road and going to actually the industrial ground zone closer to, like, the Stares plant or Ninth Street and Lyons and the lumberyard. So. So we saw this as a better location to get the trucks to North Second Street.
Thank you.
Have you reviewed the letter from the drainage district?
I have. You know, I actually think, so their comments about expanding and more payment and all those are great comments. And actually, all, any of those things would require another review by the city staff. So on one hand, I think their concerns actually get addressed better if there is an approved site plan. I think the previous owner proved that, and one disadvantage maybe of detached dwellings is they aren't regulated very much. And if somebody wants to park 20 or 30 or 40 cars in his backyard, and he can and collect a bunch of tires, and it turns into a semi-junkyard, that it's clearly in better shape today than it was previously. We wish we had better previous pictures to show, but we didn't, we didn't know we'd need them. But I deal with Cod Drainage District, and I understand their concerns, obviously, of the floodplain. But I actually think their, again, their concerns about this encouraging an expansion would just require another review by the staff.
And what is the intended use for the dwelling unit?
A dwelling unit.
Is it going to be rented, or, I mean, it's been called a dwelling unit for years, but apparently it wasn't used that way. So I'm just curious on how it's going to be kept.
As you notice, from the, from the county, it's an approved residential single-family home.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Werner?
Okay, thank you.
I have.
Almost.
I do, I have a question for you. We saw a photo of the concrete blocks. I assume that is the temporary closure that would then become a permanent closure that was mentioned.
Correct. And there's other things that would have, if this gets approved, there's other things that would have to be done on that site with the other items that are stored there, whatever the right word is, that would be removed and inspected to the approved site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You have, Commissioner Butler?
I do have questions for Mr. Schneider. The pictures that you had presented, there was one that I think you stated your client could see, maybe out his front yard.
Oops, there we go.
I think it's that one.
Okay.
Mr. Werner had talked about screening. I believe, Mr. Werner, correct me if I'm wrong, had talked about screening so that you couldn't see the truck that is parked there. Is that, has that been considered by your clients, or would they still be in opposition to this CUP if there was additional screening up?
Well, to some extent, it addresses the visual concern.
Okay.
But out of sight does not mean out of smell or out of noise and the accompanying things. I don't know the details of the septic tank operation. I challenge the idea that it's, that every truck parked there is going to have an empty septic tank at every time. I believe that they do not fill up with daily, uh, single service, regardless, there's going to be smell.
So if I understand comments correctly, are there already being trucks parked at this location?
That's the point, Commissioner, yeah.
And so you're telling me that your clients already smell, there's smell coming from the trucks that are there?
That's correct. This has been clearly what the law would call an illegal, non-conforming use.
Say that again.
It's an illegal, non-conforming use. And for the, I just don't understand why it's been permitted to go on. I don't know why there's been a citation. These people are operating as if they have been granted the CUP already. It's not zoned for the current use. It's illegal activity. And by even considering, considering this application, it is my opinion that everyone is turning their head and says, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Willie?
Can I call back either Mr. Werner or the business operator to address the, just the issue of smell?
My name's Scott, and I'm the operator.
And your last name, please?
Scott Helm.
Thank you.
So the neighbors have mentioned that either they do smell something, or they think they will smell something. Can you just address, you know, what you do and how, and then what the issues might be with just parked trucks?
Well, it's next, near impossible for them to smell anything. They're vacuum trucks. They cannot leak. They have to meet certain requirements by Douglas County. So if they can smell it, then it's leaking, which means I'd be driving down the road and dumping septic, which is not. I go through seven different counties for inspection, and never once has any one of my trucks failed. So for them to smell, it's not like there's storage on the lot that there's septic being stored. For one, you can't leave water in a tank when it's 10 degrees outside. You tell me what you got when you do that. An ice, you know, a big chunk of ice. So, and as far as the picture of the truck that was there, that's because it was coming out of the garage from being stored inside. The trucks come out 7:30 in the morning, we fuel them up, we run eight, 10 hours a day, and they get parked inside, other, with the exception of one or two. And they're on four to six inches of gravel out of the floodplain.
Can I ask you, sorry, can I ask you about hours of operation? Do you run weekends, or is it mostly a weekday thing?
It's 95% of the time, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. I'll do an emergency on the weekend if somebody needs service.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the owner? Okay, thank you.
Actually, I have one question. That is, the application mentions a former property at 802 Lincoln Street?
Uh huh.
And I'm just curious, can you explain the reason? I mean, if you've got neighbors who don't want you parking the trucks there, what's the complication with just continuing to park them at, on Lincoln Street? Because if you're going to seven different counties, it's like six blocks to North Second Street as opposed to two blocks. Is there a, is there a particular reason for, for using this property as opposed to the former property?
For one, I don't own that property. And for two, it's no longer owned by, it's no longer part of the company. The property's been sold.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Ashworth?
Question for staff. In one of the staff findings, there was concern about planned stormwater management. I'm just wondering if anybody could speak to that, what the concerns might be for stormwater management in the floodway.
Well, I think the primary concern was, as part of that northeast sector plan, part of the discussions in formulating that plan for that area was stormwater management in that area. And the determining goal that came out of that was that that floodplain, floodway area should remain as open space to help with that stormwater management. So Jeff might be able to speak a little bit more to that, but that's the primary concern, is that, that was a heavy consideration in formulating that plan, and it got incorporated into the plan's goals.
So is this, are the permit application, are there particular concerns about what's happening on that property with this permit related to stormwater?
There could be, depending on whether or not that area that's been gravelled is used for additional storage. If there's exterior storage happening in that area, that would be in the regulatory floodplain, which would be a concern as far as having materials in the floodplain.
Thank you.
And the county is here, too. If there's a specific question that we can't answer, we can always get input from the county, so.
The county's here. Well, I had a question about, it looks like there's a lot of fill on that property. Is anybody able to address when that went in, or the stability of that fill?
I can't address that, me.
Please come up.
Do you have any insight into the fill?
So the first complaint that we took on the property was when they were working on cleaning up the property, and there were concerns about actually what was happening and if fill was going into the floodplain. And we actually found that they were removing trash, and we took out, we worked with KDHE, they have a tire removal program, and we submitted that and got several hundred tires removed from the property. And then they cleared brush and trees. So we actually don't believe that any fill, at least since they've purchased the property, has been put into the floodplain. If nothing else, it's been removed.
Are there considerations for, you know, weight on that fill next to it, or the use of the gravel right next to the drainage ditch?
If, if the gravel was substantial, you know, if there were several inches or a foot of gravel, then that changes the grade, and we would require a floodplain development permit. If it's super shallow and it's just sitting at grade, and, you know, it's an inch or two, then, then we wouldn't be concerned about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Question for staff. As it applies to this question, whether or not there's still a floodplain or not, I'm assuming that the picture in the packet is the latest aerial on GIS?
Yes.
Okay, because the one on Google shows substantial amount of clearance and fill. And I can't, can't really compare the apple to the other apple without having the lot on GIS.
I'm not sure if it's fill, or if it's just the fact that the property is now so clear and primarily gravelled that it looks like it's fill. There is a little bit of a grade change from the road to where that gravel is located. But primarily, that entire triangle is almost all gravel.
But it looks like it's in the, it's not in the floodway.
Correct.
It's in the floodplain.
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Sinquin?
Related question, Catherine. The image, I think, that Mr. Werner showed, I don't even know what to call it, but the picture showed that everything was sort of clustered, and it looked like it was outside of the floodway. Is that right?
It is right. So all of the structures are outside of the regulatory floodplain. They are kind of clustered towards the eastern, the southeastern corner of the property and the eastern corner of the property.
And so is, is that portion of the property that's within the regulatory floodplain anticipated to be used in the future? Would it be used if this CUP was allowed, or could that be restricted?
So that is not part of the revised CUP application. It is only for the Honeybee truck storage in the eastern portion accessory structure. There is to be no exterior storage associated with this conditional use permit. That would be a whole other level of evaluation that is not currently for this application.
And so, like, the northeast sector plan, the staff report says it specifies that all floodplain areas should remain open as, or remain as open space in future land use planning. Is the, it seems to me that based on the picture that that is at least, you know, sort of technically being complied with. Is the concern that there still could be the, is the main concern the stormwater runoff that could be impacting?
I think, I think the concern is the intensity of use could encroach upon that open area that is currently there. I think that's the concern.
I mean, so could a conditional use permit be granted that could just be pulled as soon as there was any indication that any, there was any encroachment?
Enforcement of a CUP is always an option. So, yes, if there are conditions placed on the CUP, then they would have to be enforced, so.
Right, okay.
And yes, revocation of a CUP is also an option. And the county floodplain regulations prohibit any storage inside the floodplain.
Okay. But we can certainly recommend a limited number of trucks stored on the property. Is that correct?
You have the option to add or remove conditions if you are considering approval of a CUP in your recommendation, yes.
Commissioner Sin.
One of the things I find difficult about this is trying to compare what's happening on the other side of the floodway. And look at the intensity of the use just on the other side of what is not allowed to be developed. And with the exception of a big red stripe going through it on the, that being the floodway, it would almost look like that's a continuous use.
But isn't that in the city?
It is.
So it would be hooked up to the other side of the drainage ditches, making use of city stormwater management and sewage and all those other services. Is that correct?
It would be, or it is.
If it is inside the city, it would be subject to the city rules at that point in time. So the Plan Development Code would be applicable to the property.
And if I have the one that the commissioner's referring to, I believe it's on CS inside the city of Lawrence.
Commissioner Willie?
Mr. Werner? Sorry, Mr. Werner? Is, so there's city water to the property, is there also city sewer to the property?
There's not.
There is septic there?
Septic.
Is the septic located in the floodplain? There's not a lot of area left?
No, it's, it shows up too dark on this drawing. It's in between kind of those three buildings.
Okay. Is that an area that's going to be used for parking, or is that grass?
It's been inspected.
Can you repeat what he said, so I can?
That he, it's been inspected by the county, and they've approved the use of that septic system. So I don't, I don't know all the particulars on it, but it is not in the floodplain or the floodway.
And the parking isn't on top of it?
It is not on top of it.
The proposed parking?
Correct.
Thank you. Oh, one more question while you're there.
Okay.
So all the gravelled area that is within the flood, floodplain area, is that intended to be used for anything, or is that just kind of part of the cleanup effort?
I mean, it was just part of the cleanup effort.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I just have one quick question for staff and maybe the applicant. Just to be clear, is the proposed truck storage and parking to be indoors?
That was what was represented in the application, yes.
I see that the existing buildings there should remain, 36 by 60 is for truck storage. So that sounds, that should be, if this is approved.
I mean, obviously, their trucks will be coming in and out. They may be warming up in the drive as they're pulling out. But the intention, I think, in the application was that they were being stored in that accessory structure.
Gotcha.
As I mentioned, we go as to get them all inside, but at some time, we may have to have, we have one outside behind the existing residential structure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone want to start?
Throw a couple of things out there. Seems to be two main concerns would be the impact on the, on the floodplain and the stormwater, and then maybe its compatibility with the surrounding uses. And I feel, at this point, sort of comfortable with being able to do a CUP with some sorts of conditions that would allow revocation if that demarcation that's on that picture up there was approached upon. The concern I have, though, is that, sure, there's stuff to the east that's, you know, sort of in keeping with what this development would be, but there's more residential on the west side. And so it seems to me that we may, I mean, the concern, I guess, I have is I'm not sure how compatible it is to just put this in that neighborhood. And what I've heard so far essentially is, the only reasons are that the property's been cleaned up, but that I don't know that that necessarily, like, is a good reason to put it in there just because the property's been cleaned up. And that's kind of where I'm at. You know, is this something that we think is appropriate, given the character of the neighborhood? Is it suitable for it just basically because, you know, it's been cleaned up? Or do we need to have something else? Are there other, I guess, are there other things that we need to consider?
I do have a question or comment, Chair. The, and I might butcher your name, so I apologize, but Jackie Houts said that there had been a prior trucking business that had operated there, I think she said 20-plus years. So I don't, I guess I'm having a hard time seeing the difference between the proposed CUP and what had been there, and then the improvements that the owner has made to the property, that they're going to store these vehicles, from what I gather, inside, except for maybe one, and that they're gonna, are willing to put up screening on the side of, on the picture that we saw where the truck was outside. that we saw where the truck was outside. So, I don't, it doesn't cause me really any angst, for lack of a better word, to, to approve the CUP because of what some of the property owners or property owners in the area have said, the prior business that was represented to us that had been on the property, and then the storage of those trucks inside.
If, I think that's a great point, Commissioner Butler. And I guess one question I have is the previous use, was it, was it permitted? I mean, was that something that was allowed or was that just something that was going on?
I'll have to double check with the county, but I'm not aware of a previous use of truck storage. Now, if they were operating, the use in, registered in the county is for a single-family home. And so.
So, my, my one concern, Commissioner Butler, would be like?
Might clarify that with county staff.
Okay. I mean, to the extent that's true, that it was just something that was happening, like here now, we have a CUP where we're, we would be recommending a seal of approval of this business that maybe is in keeping with something that was happening there for 25 years that was not being done.
But I understand that the only complaint, there's no question before you, sir, I apologize. The only complaint that you've had, is that correct, is when they started cleaning up the property or am I incorrect?
No, we've received several complaints.
Can you come up?
Sorry.
You have to get on camera.
So, we've received several complaints. The first complaint was regarding possible fill in the floodplain or what was going on in the floodplain. We've received, I think, two or three additional complaints about truck traffic at that site since then.
Recently.
And then that actually has triggered our office to ask for an inspection on the site. And so, we went and inspected the site and verified that the use was not an allowed use in an agricultural district and then asked that they either annex into the city limits or apply for a conditional use permit.
I have a quick follow-up too. One of the allowed uses in agriculture though is truck, truck garden. What, can we elaborate on truck garden?
So, I think you're referring to?
Truck something.
Farm trucks for agricultural use, so.
Uses allowed in A District include farms, truck gardens, orchards. Or is there a?
Truck garden would be selling your produce out of the back of a truck.
Oh.
Why would she say?
Yeah.
I was about to ask, what's a truck garden? So, okay, now I know.
Tanya. So, if, if, so the Pope, farm is going to be using the residence or somebody's using the residence and then the accessory building to the west is just farm storage. So, if this were to just be the farm using it, they could store any number of vehicles there without triggering any kind of non-compliance. Would that be right?
So, we get into the weeds a little bit on agricultural exemptions. When we process agricultural exemptions on a property, the first thing that we look at is if the property, the land use is being used for agricultural purposes. That's the very first criteria and that site is not being utilized for agricultural purposes.
That is addressed too in the staff report. I think we did comment on the criteria, the two criteria that, for ag exemptions.
Right. But the, the building, so we're only talking about the building to the east, but the building to the west is just ag storage, isn't it?
I believe so.
Okay.
And actually, part of the building permit, when that building was permitted and part of the board of zoning appeals was that that building not be used for commercial purposes because there were some concerns at the board of zoning appeals meeting of what they might use that site for. And then on the actual building permit, it does state that it's not to be used for commercial purposes.
But it's not an ag exempt structure itself? It's a?
That's correct. It is an accessory building. It did not qualify for an ag exemption.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Tanya while she's up here?
I'd just like to clarify if I may. And I'm not sure if I'm following up on Commissioner Willie's question, but if this CUP were to be denied, would it have an impact on this accessory building under construction?
No.
I'm not sure.
The accessory building is permitted for any accessory use. It's accessory to the primary residence, so it can continue being used for those purposes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Do you have any comments or concerns? Well, I have a couple of things that stood out in going through the report. One is the position of the drainage district. Two is the stated intent in both Plan 2040 and the northeast sector plan to try to maintain the open space. And I think part of that we've addressed, that this gravel area to the east is, really can't be used for anything. So, we're just talking about one strip and trying to park trucks inside one building. The other is the possibility of the annexation and the issues that come out of that. Also, the more conditions we put on this increases the possibility of an enforcement action, but those take time because those are going to have to be, you know, notice to the, to the, to the owner and then the response time. And then once, if there's not compliance, then they file the official paperwork to try to revoke it. They get to appeal it to the county commission. I mean, meanwhile, if we set a short enough CUP time, the time will expire by the time anyone hears it. So, I don't know. We have a lot of issues if we're going to actually discuss approving this and crafting restrictions that would be adequate to address the issues that have been raised. So, I'm open to any thoughts or comments. Commissioner Willie?
I guess I'll just say it is a problematic parcel. I mean, there's so much in the land you can't do anything with. Buildings are kind of clustered tightly into one small area. It's a unique neighborhood that you have residential. You also have industrial, there's more industrial off the map to the northeast again also. And the indoor, indoor truck storage doesn't bother me that much, but there's just so many, just unique pieces to this. So, I, I think there's room for approval with some restrictions on it that would give the neighbors some, some amount of redress if they needed to, to call it in.
Might you have any proposals?
Let's hear what everybody else has to say.
Commissioner Struckoff?
I, I share Commissioner Willie's thoughts. I think there is room for approval of this application. I do have great concern for its compatibility and appeal to the neighbors to the east and Mr. Aberkamp's concerns about what he sees when he looks out, I think are valid. I think the idea of screening on the eastern side of this is, is number one consideration for that type of, for, for, if it were to be approved, I think that would be a number one consideration. I take the drainage district's comments very seriously. I think that with the, you know, we are moving toward greater protections of our floodways and our watersides and that's a good thing. In this case, I think the use of this eastern strip of this property and the indoor storage mitigate my concerns in that regard a little bit. And so, I think with proper conditions on this, I think we might be able to find a way to, to make it work.
Anyone else? Do you have any suggestions as to proper restrictions?
Well, I believe screening was discussed. That's something that will come up in the site plan space. And I think that's, as I said, very important. The conditions that staff has proposed in the event of approval, I think are, are generally acceptable. I think that there might be something added in there about screen. There was a stat, they mentioned, the staff report suggests re-establishment of greenscaping, green space and landscaping. And I think especially screening on the east side of this property would be foremost among, among condition number one as staff has recommended in the event of approval. So, I would like to see that. And I think the, the hours and the access point constructions are, are good ideas. As I say, my main concern was the compatibility with the residential areas further to the east. That is, that's a great concern to me. I think the fact that they are coming closer to Second Street is also a mitigating factor. That's, that's a good thing. And as I say, I think some of these, those conditions, particularly the greenscaping, landscaping, might help ease my concerns with this.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Stotter?
Can we see the proposed staff conditions if there were to be?
If I may, I'd also agree with staff that these are the minimum.
We have nothing up there about lighting.
There was no lighting proposed, which is why it is not in the conditions.
So, the condition could be no exterior lighting.
Mr. Chairman, I ask, oh, and this might be for Tanya. What does it mean to say the gravel to be addressed according to floodplain?
I can answer that too. So, if, if the county would determine that extra fill had gone in or the gravel level has exceeded shallow, then they would be required to get a floodplain development permit for that gravel.
At this time, Tanya, by a nod, it seems to be okay? Okay. Thanks.
I do feel I have to throw into the mix the, the fact that this property has been out of compliance and just not following any rules and trucks are parked there now. Back in December, there were two trucks out behind it when I went up there on a Sunday So, I don't know. I think this is, you know, if we go forward and approve a conditional use permit, I think we're looking at at least some neighbors watching very carefully. And we can expect that if anything is out of line, there will be complaints very quickly and possible enforcement. I don't, you know, we hear this before about, you know, rewarding bad behavior by making it right after it's been done wrong. And I'm not, I'm never quite sure how to address that. Do we just take it the way it is now and try to fix, you know, address it in the future or do we take those past things or the current activities into account? So, I think that's probably up to each of us as we figure it out. But any other conditions? If we're actually looking at ways this might be approved that people would want to discuss?
Can we address hours of operation if we get on that road? Cause, you know, I asked the business owner and he said that there are occasional weekend emergency calls. Would we be able to address that?
What do you mean?
So, the?
Like address, like saying emergencies can only go from, I mean?
Well, so, I mean, the way it's listed would be just weekday business hours. It wouldn't allow for an emergency response and I'm not sure that we would want to do that to their business unless they can respond from another property, but.
But I think the goal was to store everything on this property.
You could always tweak that in, in case of emergency, only operating on the weekend or something to that effect if you had a concern about one.
Just one quick, what is the life of the CUP? What is the timeframe on the CUP?
Well, we did not recommend a timeframe. We're recommending denial. So.
I'm looking for it. I'm not. Right. That's right. What would it, what would a reasonable timeframe be?
Typically, a CUP would have a five-year review and be a ten-year lifespan. That is a general CUP. That is just a recommended item. Those can change based upon the Board of County Commissioner's recommendations and approvals.
And I think Mr. Warner said he'd be okay with all the way down to a year. What about having a condition about, that specifically says how many trucks are allowed to be stored at a given time?
Outsider, is that what you're talking about? Outside, not inside of the?
I guess that's another thing. I mean, you say how many trucks can be stored there, including X number outside or none outside? I don't know.
Well, let's, let's ask one question. Mr. Warner, how many trucks would fit inside this structure? Perhaps you're?
I would think you're more concerned obviously about them being outside than no more than two outside.
But how many would fit inside?
Three can get inside.
All right. Thanks.
I can take a stab at it.
Commissioner Butler, you look like you want to say something.
I do. I recommend that we approve the conditional use permit for 1462 North 1700 Road, subject to the minimum recommendations listed in the staff report. Under the provision that says limit activity to standard weekend business hours, I would add emergency, emergencies in that sentence as well. I would think a period of, I know Mr. Warner said as little as a year, but I think the standard is five years. So, if no one else has a amendment to that term, then I would stick with the standard five-year CUP condition.
Other items raised for screening and lights?
Correct. Screening along the, what, what we saw in the picture to prevent or to limit the neighbor's view of any trucks that are parked outside, I would also add as part of my motion. The lighting, I don't think there's any request for lighting, so I'm not sure if that needs to be part of my motion or not.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be comfortable with adding a couple of conditions? One, two, that they have to comply with anyway, but just to acknowledge that we, we have concerns and, or with those would be one, there'd be no storage of anything when, within the floodplain and that the house be maintained as a residence and no other use.
I would agree to that.
And that the second structure always be an accessory unit to the residential structure and not be used for any commercial purposes whatsoever, as was what the board of zoning appeals.
Still moved.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second?
I think Mr. Sinclair had a question.
I could ask a question or I could just vote against it. The question was, would you, did you say anything about having a limit on the number of trucks outside as part of your motion, Commissioner Butler?
I did not say that, but if you have a suggestion, please make it.
I would suggest having, you know, up to two trucks stored outside. Would you incorporate that?
I will.
Or amend your motion, I guess?
To include that?
Yeah.
Commissioner Butler, would you, would you consider going from five years to three years, to have review at three years? I know I typically argue for longer periods of time so that businesses can operate with some known quantity, but in this case, because we've had compliance issues in the past and we have issues from some of the neighbors, would you be, would you consider going from five to three?
I don't, I don't oppose that. I, I don't, when we say compliance issues in the past, I'm not quite sure. I can't remember how long this owner has owned the property, but I don't believe this owner is who we've had issues with, correct?
The, the compliance issues were as they were going for, to the board of zoning appeals about the?
Okay.
Use of the house. So, it was with this owner, but.
That's the specific issue that you're talking about, not?
Yeah.
Okay. So far, we have a very calm.
I have a clarification.
Is the, is the five-year for the review or for the permit to expire?
I think we just amended that to three. And I think it would be for a review, not for it to expire.
Okay.
Is there an expiration?
Yes.
Why all these questions?
Would every review before us or review by staff?
And it's usually administrative review, it would be by the county. And then if there's an expiration date, then they reapply after the expiration date for renewal of their CUP.
So, it could be a review in a certain number of years expires at a longer period of time where there'd have to be an application to extend. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You want to try twisting your motion?
No.
Can you repeat your motion?
So, the question that staff has asked is if it is going to expire or if it's going to be renewed, correct? Reviewed.
Typical, typical term limit for the CUP is a five-year review, administrative review and then a sunset date at a 10-year mark. So, I guess our question is first, was this three-year the expiration or was that just review? If it's? If it's just a review, then is there an expiration of the CUP?
So I, if it's typical to do it in 10 years, I don't oppose having that be part of my motion, but the three years was just a renewed.
Administrative review every three years with a sunset date of 10 years.
Yes. No, Jim, I'm not going to repeat it.
I'll second it.
So the motion on the table includes what's on the screen right now, removing the temporary closure, permanent close of west access, construct access points to city standards, limit activities to, what, eight to five on weekdays except for emergencies?
Cool. That is correct.
No exterior storage on the gravel area to the west?
That is correct, and the, the hours would include weekends if there was emergencies on the weekends, so not just weekdays, but weekends as well.
Okay, that the residence, remains residential in the accessory structure, continue to comply with the County Board of Zoning Appeals restrictions, that it cannot be commercial in any way, that up to five trucks on the property, only two outside at any time? I think, have I caught everything?
No, you're missing a screening.
Oh, screening to the.
Any additional landscaping, and then the three-year review.
Okay.
With the 10-year.
Right, screening, landscaping, three-year review, administrative review, 10-year sunset, and nothing about lighting.
Correct.
Okay. Is that what we have? Is that your motion?
So no provision about lighting?
There was no recommendation on lighting, and I don't think there's any request from the applicant on lighting, so that was not part of my motion.
So if lighting is requested, they have to come back and get, amend the site plan?
They would need an electrical permit anyway, so.
Okay, and it, well, that would all be part of the altering of site plan for that then? This is getting really wonky now, so.
You could add one for lighting that has to comply with the county codes and regulations at the time if that's the case, and just kind of state that there is no lighting proposed and lighting is not permitted at this time, if you would like to add it, and that way it falls back to the county code at the moment for the ask to comply to.
That would also be covered in their administrative review in the three years.
But that's part of, I mean, complying with those conditions is part of it anyway, so why would we have to restate it?
Board's choice, sometimes I just like to have that added on there, but.
To, to advise the county commission when they review that we discussed it, and that's something we won't consider, that's a reason to put it in.
Okay.
So, do we have your motion now?
Yes.
This group constructed motion. Do we have a second?
I do, I will.
We have a second, but Commissioner Willie, any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Sinclair?
I'm going to make one addition. I'm going to vote against it. I think we should have a one-year review, given everything that we've discussed.
I'm going to add, I'm going to vote against it because I still have concerns about the open space and the concerns by the drainage district that I don't think have adequately been addressed, and I understand that this property's been in use for truck storage for a long time, and it's had all kinds of non-compliant uses on it in the past. It has been cleaned up, so it's safer now, it's more attractive, all those are great, but when we're looking at some of the goals that we've just adopted in Plan 2040 of trying to encourage open space and move activities back out of the floodplain and away from the waterways, I'm giving a lot more weight to the drainage district's objection, so for that reason, I'm going to vote against it. Anyone else?
I, I plan to vote against it. I'm uncomfortable with the enforcement issues that have led to this request in the first place, and I, given the, the factors put forth by the planning staff, I'm going to honor their recommendation.
Anyone else?
Mr. Weaver? I'm going to oppose the motion as well, for a lot of what Commissioner Carter said, that the golden factor is something we have to consider all the time, and the staff took a great deal of effort to go through that. We do have a lot of letters from, from local neighbors, which appear to be kind of a, they're in a honeymoon period. This has gone from a real, real bad, bad place, and it's really been improved, but now something else is going to happen, and they're going to then say, well, what happened when we changed it now? We're allowing these trucks and those kind of things, so I'm, I'm concerned about that and the floodway, especially in the drainage, so.
Anyone else care to comment? Commissioner Payden?
I had planned to vote against it also, for, for the reasons that were just mentioned, particularly floodplain.
Let's go down to, down to Commissioner Sands.
So I, my only question on, on this is, it's designated as open space, but it is not what we would consider to be open space. I mean, it's a, it's a gravelled, maybe not fully gravelled, but nothing ain't growing there, ain't going to be used for an orchard or anything, so I guess my question is, is yes, it's been a non-complying use for the better part of 20 years, but what use could it be used for? I mean, other than a residence with a giant parking lot? I think that's worthy of, of considering.
I think the parking lot's been ruled out by the floodplain regulations.
Right, so you can't even use it for, so it's just a big gravelled space next to it. And again, I go back to this, the, the comment, on the other side of the floodway, not even the regulatory floodplain, is what seems to be a pretty substantial use, granted it's under city jurisdiction, but for the reasons that we're talking about, those being environmental, open space, adherence to the new comprehensive plan, it, it's hard to, it's hard to vote against something when literally a hop, skip, and a jump away, that exact use is permitted inside the city. So I'm not saying that this is arbitrary, and I, and I, you know, it is, I think, an unfortunate condition of the way this, the way this area had organically developed with or without the, without more direct oversight by planning staff for probably 40 or 50 years prior to this. This, the area going from a more commercial into a, into a dense residential isn't the way modern planning is done, understanding all those things. What is the property owner left to do with the property, though? What use is allowed, aside from, again, half a parking lot with the residents on it?
And right there, you gave the criteria that they went to the County Board of Zoning Appeals to get permission to do something. Right. Commissioner Ashworth?
I was concerned at first about the Cal Valley Drainage District, but most of the letter refers to things that could possibly happen on this site, not that they're currently, well, under the conditions, there will be no storage in the floodplain. So most of the concerns I see in this letter are for things that could possibly happen there, but we have a conditional use permit that says those things shall not happen in that area, so I'm satisfied with that. So, and most, and most of the truck parking is in an existing accessory structure. I mean, nothing's happening with that existing structure, it's not going away, it's there and is permitted, so I'm inclined to approve.
Commissioner Struckoff?
I think the point of our discussion is to address the concerns of concern, of all concerned parties, neighbors and the drainage district, the county itself, and I think we've taken some steps to do that tonight, and as Commissioner Ashworth said, I think these are possibilities in the district's letter. I'll repeat that I take the, the drainage district's concerns very seriously, as I do those of the neighbors, and that's why I think it's important that we have the discussions we've had, to try to address those and accommodate the wishes of the business that wants to set up there. All the points you've taken about drainage, that you've made about drainage, and, and my concern is, I, I do have, I share your concern, everybody's concern about protecting our water edges. I commend the county and the city on its recent improvements to our floodplain regulations, in my view, but I think that the concerns that have been raised, I think we've done a good job of addressing them mainly. I appreciate Commissioner Butler's willingness to shorten the review period. I, I agree with Commissioner Sinclair that shorter is better. I don't know if one year is, is best, but I do appreciate the shortening of that review period, just because of the possible intensity here and, and the concerns that have been raised tonight, but I will, I will support the application.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Commissioner Butler's motion, please raise your hands. Two, three, five. All those opposed, five. Hey, we're getting good at that. Anyone have an alternative motion? A motion to deny?
So, point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There was a tie vote, so the motion fails to recommend at that point. It will still advance to the county commission at a five, five at that point in time.
Last time you insisted that we do the counter motion, so.
Was that for a city? Is that because it was a city motion?
I would still recommend the counter motion, but just want to go and let you know that it failed to recommend at this point in time.
Well, that's my understanding too, but we might as well. I'll make a motion to deny the, the application for the reasons that have been stated. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Sinclair, all those in favor of denial, five. All those in favor, I mean, against the denial, it's five, so, okay, that's what we have. At this time, we'll take a 10-minute recess because the next item's going to take probably twice as long as this one. Number three, I mean, item number four, consider text amendment to revise the zoning regulations for unincorporated Douglas County.
What about number three?
Oh, is it three?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped three. Three, consider a conditional use permit for a truck storage facility located at 1935-1937 East 950 Road.
Mary Miller, planning staff, and this is another conditional use permit for a truck storage facility. It is located on about 38 and a half acres north of Lawrence. It is about a half mile west of Lakeview Lake. It's about a little over a mile north of North 1800 Road or Farmer's Turnpike, and it is located on the west side of East 950 Road. This is the subject property. Currently, our GIS maps don't show the boundary lines quite correctly. This little parcel here has recently been surveyed off and is being sold to the neighbor to the east, so once that deed has been recorded, our maps will reflect that. And the property owner has also done a land combination survey. There's two parcels right now. The driveway comes in on one parcel and curves around to the other where the buildings are located, so he's done a land combination survey, so this will become one parcel, and that's a county regulation, is that the driveway must be on the parcel that the structures are on, and so he's taking care of those, the deeds just have not been recorded yet, so our maps don't show them that way. As you can see from this picture, the structures are set well back from East 950 Road, they're not visible from the roadway, and the property, as I said, is about 38 and a half acres, but the CUP request is for about eight acres. It includes the driveway and then the area on this property where the structures are currently located. So the truck storage facility is one of the enumerated uses in the zoning regulations for a conditional use permit in any district in which it is not a permitted use, and so the zoning regulations refer to it as trucks, truck storage facility ancillary uses, open or enclosed, provided that wholesale or retail sales are not permitted on the premises.
I'm sorry, Mary, just a moment. If, if you want to have conversations, could you take them out in the lobby, please, because it's, it appears both with the microphones picking things up and our ability to hear. Thank you.
And that wholesale and resale, retail sales not be permitted on the premises, and so that is one of the conditions that's being recommended, primarily just as a notice that that's a use that's not allowed. And the intent of that is that it doesn't become more of a store, it's more of just a truck storage use. Any open storage must meet the minimum yard requirements of the district in which it's located and must be screened by a view-reducing wall fence or landscaping material from adjacent public roads and residentially zoned properties. And so those are the requirements that are stated in the zoning regulations. The applicant was operating this facility, this business, and the zoning and codes office received a complaint. There was a concern about the amount of truck traffic they noticed, and they wondered what was going on at the site, so they visited and they informed the property owner that the use did require a conditional use permit, and so they came in and applied for a conditional use permit, and that's before you today, through an effort to bring their use into compliance. They currently have seven trucks they store on the site. This is a landscape company, and so they have trucks and trailers, and they also store landscape equipment, some snow removal equipment. They currently have seven trucks, but they indicated they would like to grow, so they'd like to be able to go up to 15 trucks, and that is one of the conditions you'll note in the recommended conditions of approval, is that this CUP is for up to 15 trucks, anything more than that would require submittal of a new CUP. And they indicated they usually have about three employees per truck, so that would give you an idea of how much parking would be required. They do have exterior storage that's associated with the landscape business. They store mulch, topsoil, pallets, landscaping bricks, various items like that. At a site visit, I did notice there seemed to be piles of debris and dead plant materials, and so one of the conditions is also that the debris can be stored, but it just needs to be removed of in accordance with the Douglas County Solid Waste Management in their county code. The property owner provided a narrative of how the business operates. It's very similar to the one that was heard just before this. The employees arrive at the site in the morning, they pick up the trucks and equipment, they leave the site, go to work, and then they come back, and it's usually about 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Someone may stay on the site during the day, may, they may be doing maintenance to equipment or trucks, but it's a rule, there's not very many people there, and the property owner indicated there are deliveries throughout the week, but these are not very frequent. This is a detail from the conditional use permit plan. It shows, in blue is the area that's within the conditional use permit request, the rest of the property will remain as it is, and the dot shows that as you drive into the driveway, the first building that's associated with the use is a greenhouse, and this is where they store plants in the summer, and in the winter, they store their sand. They are reusing structures that are on the site now and have been there probably when it was used for agriculture. As you continue on into the site, the next building you come to is the small storage building. This is where equipment will be stored, and there's also some outdoor storage areas noted close to this. And then as you continue on into the site, the last building is the steel barn. Truck parking is proposed near the barn or a little bit further to the south. This would be outside truck storage. Some trucks could be stored inside the barn as well, and this is that large barn, and this is the employee parking area, and then right along this side would be where trucks would be stored. And then this shows where the mulch pit is, mulch would be stored here, and then the other side of that is where topsoil is stored. So we looked at the golden factors, we look at what is the zoning in the area? This area has quite a lot of agricultural zoning. It also has some A1 or suburban home residential zoning for platted rural residential subdivisions, and in the northeast corner, we have Valley Channel, which is in the Kansas River floodplain. And I don't know if you remember from the area, I'll show you another one later, but the western portion of this property is very heavily wooded, which would provide a pretty appropriate or adequate buffer between the proposed facility and the residences to the west. This shows the land uses in the area as listed in the Douglas County Appraisers Office. There's a lot of agriculture, there's a lot of. There's a lot of agriculture, there's a lot of single-family residential. The facility is not visible from the roadway, but it is visible to this residence just to the northwest. And so, you'll know, one of the conditions was the installation of an evergreen screen to provide a buffering between that structure, or that residence, and the outside storage. With those conditions that we've been applying, I believe that the, and that we'll talk about some more of the conditions that we're suggesting, the facility should be compatible with the zoning and land uses in the area. When we look at the character of the area, we just kind of look at the surrounding area. Here, I took North 2000 Road, and then I cut off on the east side, right where Lakeview Lake is, North 1850 Road on the south, and East 850 Road on the west, to provide kind of a general boundary. This area is characterized by a large amount of woodland. There's quite a lot of topographical variation, and that's the case with the subject property. On the east side, it's fairly smooth grade, and it's got grassland. The west side has a lot of grade change, and that's why it's remained as wooded area. And this is the area that I mentioned would provide the adequate buffer from the residences to the west. There's floodplain along the Kansas River, and that's where the Valley Channel is. This is the cropland in the area. Most of the agricultural uses are grassland or pasture. And then, we have the platted residential properties, and then some of the just scattered rural residences throughout the area. I also wanted to mention that there is, North 1800 Road is a higher classification road, but East 950 Road is a local road. And so, the truck traffic would be utilizing this local road to access Farmer's Turnpike. So, we met with the La Compton Township representative to see if they had any concerns with the truck use of their local road, and they indicated that currently, they apply dust palliative. It's part of their policy that if there's a certain number of trips per day, then they apply dust palliative to that portion of the road. So, currently, they apply dust palliative from 1829 down to 1800 Road, or 1892, Joe, when that is. And so, through the discussion, they feel that the business may provide, when you figure the employees coming to the site and the trucks leaving, they thought 40% of the traffic per day could be attributed to this business, and they suggested that the business owner pay for 40% of the dust palliative costs, which would be about $2,600 a year. And they did agree on that fee, and you'll notice that is one of the recommended conditions. However, there is a five-year review, and that's just for compliance, but another purpose of that review is to review that dust palliative cost and just to see if that fee is adequate, if the dust palliative is enough, and if there's any other issues with the roadway. So, with the conditions we're applying, I do feel that the use is compatible with the character of the area. With detrimental impacts, whenever you have a conditional use permit, there are certain impacts you assume could be detrimental. Lighting is always a large impact. There is no exterior lighting being proposed with this facility. Noise from outside activities, event centers, neighbors always concerned about people gathering in the parking lot and talking, and then just noise of gatherings. There should be limited outside activity with this CUP. The employees come, they pick up the trucks and leave. A few employees would stay there perhaps throughout the day to do maintenance, but there should be very limited activity on the site that would affect nearby neighbors. And so, a very standard condition for truck storage is to note that maintenance is allowed only on equipment that's stored on the site, and that's just to prevent it from becoming kind of a unofficial auto mechanic shop, repair shop. So, you can't bring vehicles in to work on them, but you can work on vehicles that you store there. No retail wholesale sales, that's as noted in the zoning regulations, is just reiterated. The CUP is limited to the area shown on the plan, so that's where the activity can occur. A very common negative impact with landscape companies is that they sometimes haul grass clippings and other landscape materials out to the country and burn them. And there's been a lot of complaints about that with other landscape companies, so that's just a condition that's noted here. That isn't something that's happened at this site, but just to ensure it doesn't happen, burning of landscape materials is prohibited. Exterior storage may occur only in spaces that are marked. And as I noted earlier, the debris materials must be disposed of per county code, so this doesn't just become a junkyard for debris landscaping materials. No exterior lighting is proposed, but if any was proposed, it would have to go to, be submitted, a lighting plan would be submitted to the planning office for review and approval before it could be installed. The woodland west of the facility must remain, and that is to provide the buffering. If something happened and that woodland was destroyed, and it no longer provided a buffer, then they would need to come through and look at perhaps installing some screening. I don't expect anything like that to happen, but it's just one of the conditions to clarify that. There is a limit on the number of trucks and trailers that can be stored. That's set at 15 trucks and five trailers. If they exceed that, it would require the submittal of a new CUP, just because that would be more intense, and we'd want to evaluate, you know, if we think that would be compatible with the character of the area. They are participating in the dust palliative program, and so, that would help alleviate the impact of their extra traffic on the roadway. And there is a 10-year expiration date, and that way, we can reevaluate the area. There seems to be quite a lot of residential development here, and as if it continues to develop, we would want to reevaluate, is the use still compatible with the surrounding area? And those would all work to resolve any possible detrimental impacts. Other golden factors we look at is, what is the suitability of the property to the uses to which it is restricted? In the A District, you can have a variety of uses. You can have schools, veterinary hospitals, churches, agricultural uses. And so, the property is suitable for several of those uses. The eastern half is suitable to agricultural uses. The western portion, due to the grade change, really isn't suitable to agriculture, but it is fine for open space. Actually, the western portion of the property isn't really suitable for any of the uses just due to that grade change. And with the conditions that are being applied on the use to mitigate or minimize any possible detrimental impacts, I don't believe there'd be any gain to the public health, safety, or welfare with the denial of the request. We did receive some public comments. Some of those were mentioned in the staff report. We received a few phone calls indicating support for the project. I did receive one phone call from a property owner to the north that was opposed, and she indicated she was going to write a letter. She didn't give me any specifics as to why she was opposed to the project. She doesn't live in the area, and so, I don't think she got her letter in time. If she has a letter, she'll probably provide it for the county commission. And then, we did receive an email in support of the project, and that was provided to you in the packet update. The email mentioned the speed limit on East 950 Road, and so, it mentioned that they had discussed maybe setting a speed limit on that partial, portion of the road. So, I emailed the county engineer, who's also the county public works director, to see if he thought a reduced speed limit is necessary. That's the only comment that I heard provided to the planning office about the speed. And so, staff recommends forwarding this request to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval based on the findings in the staff report, and then subject to the conditions as revised with the staff memo to indicate that $2,600 fee for dust palliative. So, the applicant is here today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Thank you, Mary. The applicant care to come up?
Good evening. My name is Dalian Holtkamp, and I'm the owner of the property. I'm also the owner of Turformance Lawn Services, the landscape company in question.
I'm Bernard Jarboe. I'm an attorney. My office is here in Lawrence, or at Ninth and Mass, in the U.S. Bank Building, and we don't really need to make a formal presentation, I don't believe, because we submitted everything in writing to staff with photographs, and I do want to commend your staff. I've practiced law for 42 years doing this kind of work. Your staff was very diligent in making us nail down all the various elements and making sure that we had the various survey work that was necessary, and both the enforcement, code enforcement staff that we met with first, and then with your zoning staff as well. So, we do appreciate their diligence, and I think this recommendation comes with answers to all of their questions. But we're here to answer questions if you have any now, or we'll make a presentation afterwards if a public comment raises something.
Well, thank you. I'm sure there might be some questions. We'll see if we have any public comment.
Okay.
I did have one quick correction. The, the traffic usage was mentioned at 40%. If you're actually counting traffic, we would represent at our peak, which landscape company, so April or May, we would represent approximately a 10% traffic increase on this road. We agreed to pay 40% of the dust palliative, so there is a separation on the numbers there. So, I'm sure we're going to discuss traffic, so I wanted to lead with that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep, thank you.
This time, we'll open this matter to public comment. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item, please come up to the podium, sign in, state your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Walt Spencer. This place is north of my place. I've got three questions here, which I haven't seen brought up on this usage of this property. One of great concern is fuel storage. Are they going to have fuel storage there? And is it going to be stored in adequate containers with spill-proof containers? So, if it does leak, that's one of the main things there. Also, has the fire department gave its approval? The next thing is restrooms. Are the restrooms going to be there and approved? Thank you.
Thanks. Any additional public comment?
I'm sorry, we can't... You might cover what I've...
Hi, my name is Fran Avery. I'm the neighbor directly to the south of Mr. Holtkamp's building, so is there any way we can show that second slide, which I think was the location slide, that showed his property in yellow? I think I can, I don't know if I got the right place. So, if you see to the south of Mr. Holtkamp's property, there's a sort of a hatchet-shaped parcel. My husband, Stan Avery, and I own that entire parcel of land. It's 1929 East 950 Road. We've owned that land since 2016, and we've known Mr. Holtkamp virtually that entire time. The larger part of the parcel, well, to the left on the slide, is where our home site is. We're currently building our home there. We can see Mr. Holtkamp's buildings from our home site. We have absolutely zero issue with the proximity of his buildings to our home site, not to mention, he's been an exceptional neighbor for the entire time that we've owned our land there. We think that his neighbor directly to the east will say the same, and he's here tonight. And we, we have spoken with our neighbor a little further along to the west, who indicated his support. I don't know if he wrote a letter or not, and I believe the neighbors to, somewhat to the northwest, support it. So, by way of being very emphatic, I'm the one that wrote two emails. One was kind of surly, and maybe one not so surly, but at any rate, my point was, he's an exceptional neighbor. We've heard urban legends about how lawless that area may have been in the past. We found indication of such things. We wouldn't want it to revert to that, and to the point about what other uses may it have, presumably not many. And additionally, if the issue really is about the traffic, to Mr. Holtkamp's point a little earlier, there's no way in the world that his traffic is 40% of what goes down that road. I would say at the very most, 10% to his point, and I think that he is offering the palliative contribution out of the goodness of his heart, which says everything you need to know about him. He was even concerned with building a berm for us that faced our side, so we, we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have a view of his operation. And let me just say that there's no more deserving person. If you look from the roadway, you, you can't see very much, and it, basically, what you can see is nothing more than what appears to be your run-of-the-mill agricultural development. It's even a lot less than some of the areas around us relative to trucks being outside. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for, for hearing me. My name is Doug Flessing. I live just south and to the east of the property at 978, 978 North 1892 Road. There's a development there, and I might be able to. Now, could you go back to a map that shows residential area that's just to the south of that, please?
This one here?
That one right there. Is it possible to blow up? Yeah, that's perfect, okay. Thank you, ma'am. We had a house built right here, if you can see where the, the mouse is circulating, 32 years ago. I, I don't know the, the people that are, are running the business. I've encountered their, their trucks a lot going up and down the road, and they are courteous drivers. They, they try to scoot over and not, not throw gravel and mud all over us, but there is a lot of traffic. Right now, there are two, two other businesses that are operating illegally, right where I'm circling the mouse. There is a, a truck company, Call Valley Diesel, I think was the name. They were on North Second Street. They've closed there and brought all their equipment to that property. And on that same property, there is a dog kennel or breeding service that's been operating illegally there for quite a while. My, my major complaint is with the noise from the kennel, but that's for another topic for another day. The only objection I have to the, the concept, this is residential and agricultural area. Folks moved out here to be in the country and be in the quiet. Well, between, excuse me, between the trucks and the dog business, and, and you add this in, the, the impact on the road is, is severe. This last little stretch right here, this is E950 Road that comes off of the Farmer's Turnpike. And then, we turn here and get into this residential area where there are about 24 homes. The county's been doing a better job the last few years maintaining that road, but still, right now, it's mud. It, it's just mud. And in the summertime, it's going to be dusty. I realize the dust control helps, but it, it doesn't take care of everything. So, my, my concern is the condition of the road and the maintenance of the road. In this area, approximately, there is a, it's down a hill and back out, and it's a narrow concrete bridge with concrete sides. Vehicles cannot pass there. The road was approved to be widened about 12 years ago, but the problem was, if the road was improved, then that bridge would have to have been replaced, and that, that blew it out of consideration. So, I would prefer not to have any, anything industrial or business like this added to the area. We've got, we've got two operating illegally right now, and I believe, I guess, maybe they're illegal now also.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi there. My name is Michael Ingalls. My wife and I and our three kids live just to the east of Dalian's property. Property of concern. I'm the neighbor that's probably in the closest proximity to the buildings. We have a fantastic setup. There is a lot of grade change from the, from 950 Road up to our house, up to where these buildings are located. I think more of a concern is how much my kids scream and yell outside... I think more of a concern is how much my kids scream and yell outside. I'm more worried about bothering Dallion than I am about him bothering us, okay? Dallion's been a fantastic neighbor. We moved out there in, 2012, 2011, 2012? December 2011? And Dallion bought the property a few months, 18, 12 to 18 months later, and we met him immediately. He has been a fantastic neighbor ever since. In particular, the previous landowner did nothing for any control of Lespadiza, and there were acres and acres of it out there, on both Dallion's property and the property that we bought. That's a noxious weed. It's considered by the county to, you need to eradicate it or be fined. Again, I'll say that there were acres and acres of it. Dallion has helped. He has helped get that under control. We're still battling it because it was left in such a condition. But he's devoted his time. Life happens. He can't devote all the time, and neither can I. But as a pair, we've done pretty good trying to clean up the site. Dallion offered early on to put a screen up for us. I'm an old farm boy. I grew up on a farm. I have no problem looking at farm buildings. That's all that it looks like up there. I'm afraid he got blamed for dump trucks being up and down the road, but there was somebody further around the curve that was filling in a pond for months, and there were an awful lot of dump trucks on the road. His guys, well, it says eight to five. His guys are usually in and out of there by 6:30, 7:00, and they, I mean, you're talking landscape. You use every bit of sunlight that you can. Virtually no, no impact to regular residential traffic.
Thank you. That was the three minutes. I'm sorry.
I have, I have one question about the conditions.
Go ahead and ask the question, and we'll see if we can get any answer.
Okay. One of the, one of the conditions is the, that Mr. Holt Camp can't burn any landscape materials. And I just want to make sure that that leaves us free to still burn prairie grass without him getting any calls or you guys getting any calls about him.
That's a good question, and we'll get any answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any additional public comment? Seeing Mr. Holt Camp, would you care to respond to the questions that have been asked?
Okay, and I think I got them all here. The first question was fuel storage. That's a great question. We have no fuel storage on the property. We do carry diesel and gas cans in a traditional five-gallon can, just like everyone has seen. We'll have a couple on each one of our trucks. But as to having a standalone, you know, 200-gallon fuel tank or something like that to fuel up trucks, we do not. There is no fuel storage on the property, and therefore, no, the fire department hasn't been referenced in this because of that. There was also a question of restrooms, which we do not have. We do not have someone there all of the time. The person who's there for the most extended periods of time is me. That's usually on the weekend because I'm fixing something. And I appreciate the concern, but it's just me, and so if we need to run into town, I'm usually running into town for the thing I forgot anyway. That's not a huge concern for me. If it is, we can discuss it, porta-potties or whatever. Let's see. It was mentioned, as far as the traffic, I guess, let's put some numbers to the traffic. So there was a traffic survey, and I was hoping the county might have brought it, because I'm not, it wasn't submitted to me, and anybody can call out if they remember it differently, but it was over 300 passes down the road per day. So the county, in the spring of last year, put out a counter, and they were counting over 300 passes a day. In our current situation, we are looking at about 35 being ours. That was done in January or February, so that would not account for our traffic, because that's our off-season. So we would be make, so figure 300 plus, and then we would be 35 on top of that. So just for frame of reference, as far as the size of our trucks, they are bigger than a traditional car, but these are three-quarter to one-ton trucks, which is a full-size truck that your neighbor probably drives. They are definitely bigger than passenger cars, and to be fair, they do cause more wear and tear on the road than a passenger car. We felt like we accounted for that in paying for that 40% instead of paying for 10% of the dust palliative. So we've, we've tried to make some inroads there. Mike mentioned, and also Mike referenced a little bit of topography and things like that. Mike's a civil engineer, so when he says that, at least to me, it carries some weight. But he mentioned burning the prairie grass. We try to do that every year. We don't succeed, but that's not landscape materials, and so my assumption would be that would be outside of the specific conditional use of not burning landscape materials. We have never burned landscape materials ever, and we don't, and we don't plan to. So that's all the questions that I wrote down. If there's any others that come up, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. We'll see if there are any.
Okay. I'll stop talking.
All right. So we'll bring it back up to the commission, and so Commissioner Willie's scribbling down a lot. Would you like to start?
I just do that. I take notes while I'm listening. Maybe, for Mary, LaCompton Township was notified about the roads, and they didn't have any particular concerns about the traffic levels, did they, or maintenance?
No, they just did want them to participate in the dust palliative.
Okay.
They were supportive of the use, but they wanted some help with taking care of the road.
And is it standard practice to notify fire departments about CUPs?
Yes, we send out notice to the fire departments and the townships, and sometimes we don't get a response, but a lot of times the County Public Works Director helps us. So he noticed this, and then he sent an email to the township trustee and said, perhaps you should look at this, which facilitated the meeting. So we usually try, we send them notice. Sometimes they don't really understand what we're asking, so sometimes it takes a follow-up.
I would make a comment that the county commission, at one of their not very long ago meetings, is really encouraging fire departments to respond to that, and if you have, if we don't hear, have applicants or have staff kind of follow up with them to see if perhaps we could get them to respond, because I think the commission especially, the county commission, likes to hear from that. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
I guess I was, the one question I had was about traffic, but I appreciate the applicant's clarification about volume, traffic volume. By my calculations, you know, 35 out of roughly 300 passes a day comes out to about 11%. There was a quest, there was a statement about intending to increase the fleet size, roughly doubling it. That's still only going to be, you know, about 20%, and if they're footing 40% of the palliative expense already, that addresses my concern. So that's, that's it for me.
Kind of also add, it was mentioned about the county maintaining the road, and those are maintained by the townships, and it's been an incredibly difficult last year and a half with all the rain to maintain them. So if you're even marginally happy with the condition of your road, you're probably better than most of the rural area in the county right now, so.
Just like a clarification on the recommendation L about the palliative program. I mean, in one part of the report, it talks about a specific dollar amount, but at the conclusion of the report, it says, enter into a contract.
Right. It's in the staff memo, because when I wrote the staff report, we hadn't had the meeting with the township yet. We had talked with them, and they said they thought they should participate. So when I wrote the staff report, I didn't know when the meeting was going to occur, but we were able to have it in time for me to actually write the staff memo, and so they came up with the $2,600 a year. So for the first five years, at least, that's what it would be.
So the request by staff, you're recommending that we set the dollar amount for five years?
Yes, right. That's what the township recommended.
Okay. Commissioner Sinclair?
Mary, the woodlands that are on the western part of the property, are those, I mean, what is the nature of those? Is it, is it like old growth? Are these sensitive lands?
I don't know that they would, you know, qualify as stands of mature trees. I could see that there were trees and a mixture of trees, but I didn't go out and kind of look at what type of trees. It's just that the grade is so different that I don't think anything else would grow there.
Commissioner Willie was shaking her head at me.
We'll hear from him, yeah.
So you were asking, I shouldn't have sat behind this call. You were asking about the screening to the west. Is that correct?
Well, just the whole stand of trees, I guess, the woodland.
So the majority of the trees that are addressed in this are cedar trees, so evergreens. So you're going to get year-round coverage. There is some wooded area, more to the north, that's part of this tract, but not really in question, that's old-growth timber, but there's plenty of screening from evergreens, yeah.
So you do have some old growth, that oak hickory? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And that is located primarily on the north half of the back section. So call that the northwest part. So there's not any real development that that's providing screening towards. It's a long ways away at that point.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
The reason I ask that question is that one of the conditions is, says if J, if woodland is destroyed or damaged to the extent it no longer provides adequate screening, additional screening shall be provided. I mean, I didn't know if that would encompass, like, for instance, the old growth, which maybe we want to be preserving? Or, I mean, would they, would the applicant technically be able to go out there and clearcut and then just be like, well, I'm just going to plant some little screen trees? Do we need to have something that kind of tries to preserve some of that older stuff as a sensitive land under Plan 2040? Or is that not a concern?
Staff, have any ideas?
Well, we were looking mainly at the area that's within the CUP application, and so we're just focusing on that land. But then the wooded area is outside the CUP application, but it does serve as buffer, so we just kind of wanted to say, keep it, that if something would accidentally happen to it, then you would need to put in something else.
Well, and that answers my question. I mean, if it's outside the CUP, then I don't really care.
And we have no plans to cut any of that old growth. We'd be happy to add that in there, because we want to protect that as well, so.
You always have the option of adding it to the list of protected lands on your own, which would be greatly appreciated by everybody, but nobody can actually direct you to do that right now, so. Any other comments, questions? Thanks. Okay. Anyone care to venture a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Sands.
I'd like to make a motion. To recommend approval of the conditional use permit for truck storage facilities to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval based upon the findings of fact found in the body of staff report and subject to conditions one and two and all their sub-conditions.
A motion by Commissioner Sands. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Carter. Any further discussion on the motion? I've seen none. All those in favor, oh, we have one.
Can I clarify that those conditions are the ones contained in the staff memo, which has the revised condition?
Which has the, for I and, was it just I? Was that the only different one?
Clarification, the staff memo is the one that mentions the $2,600 a year?
Yes, but the, yeah. That was my intent.
All right. With that clarification, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Passes 10-0. Thank you very much. That brings us to item number four. Consider a text amendment to revise zoning regulations for unincorporated Douglas County.
We went through the entire kind of a summary of everything we were proposing, and you considered that, and you returned it to staff with direction. You had specific changes you wanted us to make, and then you had requests for us to provide some additional information. And so I'm just going to go through the staff memo that was provided that goes through the different questions that were asked and the changes you wanted made. One of the first questions was, should an airstrip be permitted use in the agricultural districts? So I looked at that two ways. Number one, should they be in an agricultural district? Or two, should airstrips be permitted at all? And so an airstrip, if it's going to be permitted, is best in an agricultural district, because with every airstrip, you have imaginary zones that need to be kept obstacle-free. For the approach zone, it goes 20 feet horizontal for every one foot vertical, and the maximum height in the agricultural district is 35 feet for a structure, so that's like 700 feet that would have to be kept obstacle-free. For the side, the transition zones, it's one foot vertical for every seven feet horizontal. So to get to the point where a 35-foot structure could be built, you'd have to be about 210 feet from your property line. And so given these kind of areas, you're going to be more likely to be able to keep those obstacle-free zones on your property if you're in the agricultural district. Sometimes they're not able to, or they put it, they do extend, the zones extend onto other properties. In that case, if they can get an easement on the other property that protects their airstrip, if they can't get an easement and the neighbor builds something within that obstacle-free zone, that affects their ability to have the airstrip. They may have to reconfigure it or relocate it, or they may not be able to have an airstrip. And so we would recommend, if we're going to have airstrips, that they be allowed in the agricultural districts, just because of the size requirement. And I've, I've been familiar with airstrips being in the rural portions of counties, so I've never actually questioned why people need airplanes out in the county. So I did a kind of informal survey of northeastern Kansas, went online to the zoning and codes sections for each county, and this graphic kind of illustrates in red, these are the counties that just allow them in agricultural districts with CUPs. Anderson County was the only one that straight out does not allow them. Johnson County, it's marked green because they do allow them with CUPs, they just don't have an agricultural zoning district. They have a district they call the rural district, which allows agriculture and residences. So they do allow it with CUP, they just have it in a different district. Potawatomi, also, that's marked differently, because they allow them, but only in industrial districts. We allow them in industrial districts, but in Douglas County, we don't intend to have a lot of industrial districts. One of our criteria, if you want to have an industrial zoning district, is to show why you need it in the rural part of the county. And probably if you wanted to do something like McFarland Aviation, and you needed an airstrip, that'd be a perfectly good reason to have it in an industrial zoning district. But other than that, I can't think of a lot of reasons why an industry would need an airstrip. So I wouldn't want to limit it just to industrial. We have some, Franklin County is marked in a different color as well. They do allow it in their transitional, they also have a transitional agricultural district, and that's where they allow it. So just with the survey, it's a common to have it in the agricultural districts in rural portions of the counties, if you don't feel airstrips are appropriate use. We do have seven of them currently in Douglas County, and most of them, those all have CUPs. I believe we have a few that were determined to be agriculturally exempt. Some farmers had a lot of land, and they said they used their planes only to go look at their other properties. And so staff would recommend keeping it in the agricultural district, but only with a conditional use permit, because that does allow us a lot of ability to review the impact it could have on adjacent properties. It gives adjacent property owners or nearby property owners the ability to come in and make their comments. So I would think with the CUP, it would be appropriate in the agricultural district. It was asked, is there a need for a source water protection overlay district for Baldwin City or perhaps Franklin County, similar to what Yudora has? And it may be appropriate. It's just that Yudora developed their own water source protection plan, and so they identified the overlay district, and they have the measures they wanted implemented, and so we just added that to the zoning regulations. I think it'd be great to contact LaCompton and Baldwin City, and maybe some of the water districts that have their own wells, and see if they would like to develop water source protection plans, and maybe even facilities or communities in other, the adjacent counties that might extend. that might extend into Douglas County. That's a great idea, I don't think we have time to do that, for this to go forward, but I would say that should be a future work item, and that's, I imagine we'll be bringing back text amendments as we resolve mistakes that we've made, or things we've overlooked, but I think this would be a good project for us to work on, once these regulations get adopted. You mentioned that we should perhaps consider permitting retail and or wholesale sales with a hobby farm. Currently, in the zoning regulations, they are prohibited, but the hobby farm is only listed as a use in the A1 zoning district, which is the platted rural residential subdivisions, where properties are more dense, they're closer together. And so, we just applied that to Ag 2, but you're right, in Ag 2, you could have a lot of properties that are 15 acres, 10 acres, and they may be not qualifying for the agricultural exemption yet, they may be working on becoming a, a working farm, they're just not at the point where they make enough income that we see them as agriculturally exempt, you know, have to make a certain income off your farm, or be a certain size to, and there's other criteria they look at. But if they're just starting, then perhaps the retail and wholesale sales, these would be sales that are associated with the farm use, they would help them develop their farms, and I think that was a very good point. So, knowing that it was intended primarily to protect those denser residences in the A1 district, the proposal now is to only prohibit it in the CP or the cluster preservation district, that's in the urban growth area, and that's with the A1 districts in the urban growth area, and then those land divisions that were made through the cluster development certificates of survey, the more dense developments, it would be prohibited on them, but in the Ag 2 district, it would be allowed, just like in the Ag 1, so. Recommendation is go ahead and just revise that, more language. You directed us to revise the expanded notification area from a quarter to a half-mile, so that was made, and in the memo lists all the different sections in the code where that was changed. Another change we made is, we went to the protest petition, because protest petitions are set by state statute, and they have a 1,000-foot, because that's the state-required notification area. So we just wanted to clarify, if someone went to look at protest petitions, they realized you just need 20% of that 1,000-foot required notification area, not of the whole half-mile. And so, we put language in just to make sure that was clear. You asked for information about nonconformities, especially dwellings in commercial districts. There was a lot of discussion last week about residences, that if the property was zoned GB, and it was a residence, how would that affect it? And so, if you were legally established, and the property zoned, so now you're not allowed, but you were allowed before, you're considered a nonconforming use, you're allowed to remain, and in the zoning regulations, there's a section that explains, a nonconforming use that's damaged to more than 50% of its value cannot be rebuilt unless it is a dwelling. Dwellings have special protection status. So if you're a dwelling in a commercial or industrial district, and you're completely destroyed by tornado, you can rebuild. So there's a protection for that. You cannot rebuild if you, the use is abandoned. And by abandoned, it has to be clear that the intent of the property owner to no longer use that as a residence is apparent. So it's not just that it's been vacant, because a lot of times, a residence could be vacant because someone went to the nursing home, someone passed away, the property's, you know, in escrow, or in trust, or whatever's being discussed. Sometimes you just don't have a renter, maybe there's improvements you need to make. So you, it's not just that it's not used, the intent of the owner to no longer use it as a residence has to be apparent. And so that's a pretty stiff hurdle to meet, when you're trying to meet that. One way you can tell that is if they apply for a demolition permit, it's obvious they don't intend to keep using it as a residence, and so in that case, it would lose its nonconforming status. And then also, another way it would lose that is if they change the use from a nonconforming use to a conforming use. So if you have a residence in a commercial district, and let's say they changed it over to a restaurant, then they couldn't go back to a dwelling. Once you become a conforming use, you can't go back to the nonconforming use, you would have to be zoned. So there are protection measures for dwellings. And you asked, how many parcels would be zoned Ag 2 if, once the regulations are adopted? The county GIS office provided us, provided us information on how many parcels are of certain sizes. We have about 5,456 that are 20 acres or more, those would be zoned Ag 1, and we have about 5,130 parcels that are less than 20 acres, and these would be zoned Ag 2. There'll be some variation, because some of these may be zoned CP, that cluster preservation in the UGA. So, these aren't perfectly accurate, but they're as close as we can get. You asked us to look into the impact of converting the B2 properties in Big Springs over to the general business, the GB district. So we had a meeting with, I think nearly every property owner in Big Springs, to discuss their concerns, and their number-one concern was with losing the ability to have residential uses. So once you look at the zoning of the properties, and the top figure here just shows the zoning is commercial, all along Highway 40, and then some of the properties have split zoning with agriculture being away from the road. Those, the agriculture would go to Ag 2, and then the B2 would go to the general business. The concern is that that does not allow the residential uses, and if you look at the bottom picture on this slide, that shows the land uses that the Douglas County Appraisers' Office notes for today, and most of the properties in Big Springs are used for residential. Some of those, some of them are used for agriculture, some of them are large enough that they could be converted to commercial uses, some of them are very small parcels, and residential may be the highest and best use for those parcels. So after looking at that, we agreed that you probably do want to protect your residential uses. Some of these smaller parcels, if they're not developed now, I'm not seeing how a commercial use maybe could fit. You'd have to have parking, and then, you know, other uses. So, we agreed that adding the residential uses, and creating that separate district for Big Springs would be an appropriate step. So the Big Springs District would be called the BSC, or the Big Springs Community District, and it would be basically the general business district, but with the single-family dwelling use added, and then any other uses that kind of go along with single-family dwellings, like rural home occupations, childcare homes, accessory dwelling unit, and the rooming, boarding, or lodging houses, are all very similar. So we added those uses. And one other use that we added, which we also added to the, just the overall general business district, is the animal services. Someone was at this December meeting, who mentioned she does dog grooming and dog training, where commercial kennels are allowed, we didn't have any provisions for that. So that's been added as a use, both in the Big Springs community and the general business district. There were some questions about environmentally sensitive lands. It was pointed out that there's differences in the definitions between the subregs and the zoning codes, so we worked to make those the same. We put them in the same order, and we revised the wording. There will be a slight difference, because the subregs are joint, they're city and county, and in the county, we, or the city, we have a baseline environmental map, but it's only on the city website right now, so we didn't mention that map on the county side. Basically, they have all the information we have, it's just not on that particular map. The stream corridors show on that map, but the stream corridor information was taken from the county water layer off of GIS, so all the information is available, it's just, we wanted to note in the regulations where people could go to find this information, and in the zoning regulations, they're not gonna know what we're talking about if we say go to the baseline environmental map. So, that's still in the subregs, but not in the zoning regs. There was questions, should we remove the term restored prairie, to avoid the unintended consequences that maybe would cause people to not want to restore prairie, thinking they would have to protect it? And there's always been a lot of hesitancy with some of the prairie groups, to not even include prairie at all as a protected feature, just because people may panic and decide, I want to develop, so I'm gonna go out and plow up my prairie, I don't want you to tell me I have to protect it. And so, the only prairie we list, it's only if it's voluntary. We had hoped that we would have an organization, and we may in the future to accept the voluntary listings, but right now, it's just you would list it voluntarily with us. We have people that come in, and they say, I want to protect this side of my property because it's prairie, and we can only ask up to 40% of the property to be protected, but we have that list of protected features, which don't include prairies, but they do include stand and mature trees. So if 40% of that property has stands of mature trees, then we'll say, no, we're not gonna, you have to put the stands of mature trees in. If you want to add the prairie, you can, but now you only have like 10% of your property that you can develop. And that's why we wanted to include it in the list. We've included it kind of in the middle, it's above prime farmland, and it's above stands of mature trees. So the important things are, number one, it has to be voluntary, the property owner has to want to, staff cannot tell them, you have to protect your prairie. And number two, it allows them to count that, towards that 40%, and they can protect that, rather than stands of mature trees, or other historic or archaeological features. And so I think it'll, it's the best we can do right now, since we don't want to scare people into destroying the prairie, it does allow us some avenue to let them count it towards the protected lands. And so this is a list of lands in the order of protection. We have floodways and floodway fringe, FEMA identifies those, jurisdictional wetlands, US Army Corps of Engineers identifies those, stream corridors, we have that water layer, it's on our environmental baseline map, but the county also has that layer, they may add it to their GIS map, they've been adding different layers all the time, and so I wouldn't be surprised, it may be there already, I haven't checked, but that could easily be added to their map, they have a native prairie and restored prairie remnants, and then that would note that these would be voluntarily listed. The wording that's here won't all be added, but it'll just note that voluntarily listed. Prime farmland, stands of mature trees, and then archaeological and historical sites, and these are in a order, priority order for protection. So if you have a floodway, and you have a floodway fringe, well, the floodway's more important, you'd have to protect those too, before you do the wetlands. And so, that's why we put native prairie and restored prairie remnants in the middle, even though it's voluntary, then a person could count them, because today, sometimes you have to tell people, no, you have to protect this, it's got the trees, and they just, they want to protect the prairie, but they want, also want to develop something. And so there are some other changes we made, we did have a caller that was concerned that we were not allowing mini-storage in the lake-oriented business district, which doesn't seem like a use that's intuitive with lake-oriented business, but he pointed out that the land, just at the end of Clinton Parkway, what used to be called Judy's Junction, is developed with mini-storage and boat and RV storage, and they want to make sure they did not become a nonconforming use. So, we're suggesting adding miniStorage as a conditional use permit. It would obviously be appropriate in this district, it may not be appropriate in other lake-oriented business districts, but we'd have the chance to look at each one, case by case. And so that was kind of a fast rundown of the changes we're recommending, and the information you requested, so we're asking that you forward the revised regulations on to the county commission with a recommendation for approval, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mary. At this time, we're gonna open this matter to public comment, I'd like to try to group this. I see we got, if I kind of remember right, we have one person who's probably gonna speak again about A2 zoning, and the rest of the audience is here about the Big Springs zoning district, so.
There are a few others also.
Huh?
There are a few others.
And a few others, but let's try to go through, kind of group the comments, just so we don't get all scattered, the way it did the last time, so. Let's start with the A2 district.
Thank you, Miles Schacter, and my comments are all about the Act 2 district. So as the sixth point you saw today from Mary, 5,000 lots were created in the unincorporated area that are smaller than 20 acres, so we have 5,000 lots that are non-Ag. And my main point is, that's enough. So, my recommendation is that you, at least in the, outside the urban growth area, you don't permit any more Ag 2, there are plenty there. And in the Conference of Plan 2040 says, rural areas should be maintained as rural, and if that's the case, we've already kind of made a big intrusion into that, and that should be stopped. It should go further into the UGA, what we used to have 15 years ago was, it was, new subdivisions had to be close to cities, but I'm, that's probably better, but at very minimum, outside the UGA, no more Ag 2. And related to that is the, my second point was about ADUs. So, if ADU is to serve for the family of farmers, or an additional worker, those don't need to be in Ag 2, because Ag 2 is too small to be really a farm, those should be in the Ag 1 areas. So I would recommend that you prohibit ADU, ADUs in the Ag 2 districts. The third point's a small one, and that's about, every lot should be on a public road. It's the policy of the county that every new lot should be on a public road, but it doesn't always happen, and it's a policy, and it should say in the, in the regulations, that new, that all, I'm not talking about the existing lots, the existing Ag 2 lots, any new lots that are created should have public access to a public road. That's my comments. One minute, 44 seconds, how about that?
Thank you, Miles. There probably will be, once we get to that part.
I'll be here, thank you.
Don't go away. At this time, anybody that's here about the newly-proposed Big Springs Community Zoning District, if you want to kind of line up and take your three minutes? About the Big Springs zoning? Got one?
Patrick D. James. Can you go back to your list of the things that you had that were on there? So up on our list up there, we have animal services, rooming, boarding, there's absolutely nothing up there that's, or goes on to any hobby shops, or any kind of shop-oriented car shops, or anything, and we've discussed that, that that would be on there. I just want to make sure that whenever, they printed off us a list of all the things that we changed in our community, and I want to make sure that gets on to our list, of some kind of hobby shops and automotive shops, because there is absolutely nothing there.
We'll address that. Thank you for bringing it up. Anybody else that wants to comment on the Big Springs zoning district? All right, anything else? Anything else now? So come on up, sign in, state your name.
Already signed in, Walt Spencer. As the meeting closed, I ask you, Mr. Carpenter, about notification. There were three meetings that were held, and I've got the copy right here of both pages, no mention of changing any zoning anywhere as far as commercial zoning at all anyway. Two days before the meeting, Mary Miller gave me the sheet right here, that, and nobody, the BT zoning was even informed about this, or even knew about it all. I was the only one that had these papers, okay? I live on commercial property, I live in an area where actually, for, commercial use has actually more acres available than anywhere in Douglas County as far as BT zoning. I've got contacted State KDOT, and they have concerned, their lawyers, about this particular deal. They have devaluated all our BT zoning, because 15, 20 years ago, the county refused to enforce their zoning regulations for five years, the planning staff, not you people weren't here then, took them a year and a half to implement all these home occupations, and that with conditioner use permit, or with their Type 1, Type 2, or Type 3 home occupations, where you gotta live there supposedly, but yet we have one resident two miles from me that doesn't even live there, hadn't lived there for five years, still doing business in oil fracking outfit. Okay, let's see. But devaluing the property, and I don't want it changed from B2 to G2. All our government, foreign, state, whatever have you, are certified as B2 zoning, and there, and what about people have their signs up for the B2 zoning? It's gonna be changed, okay? Contact the people with B2 zoning, very few people have even been notified. To change anybody's zoning in the county, you have to notify the property owner, and this has not taken place in what you're getting ready to try to adopt. All B2 zone property owners should have been notified if there's any change at all, period. I'd like to have a little bit of comment about a few of these things that I've brought up, I never got any comments the last time that I brought some of these same things up. But, you gotta enforce these home occupation standards, you're supposed to live on the property. Dave Gunner and I discussed this two weeks before he had a heart attack and died, as well as Scott McCullough. And I've discussed it recently, you're supposed to live there, not just have a house and have a commercial fracking operation, operating out of that house, and then build a building too, and not use for the residential use.
All right, we'll see if we can get some answers. Thank you. Anyone else?
Natalia Louter. I have 12 acres total that comprises four rural properties and one city property adjacent to one another in North Lawrence. I'm going to talk really fast, I'm just going to read to try to get as much of this into the three minutes as possible. A definition should be included for dispersed agricultural operation, and this should be referenced throughout the regulations where appropriate. To clarify, the farm business may comprise multiple non-contiguous properties operated as one business. Farmers use land and do business across county and even state lines. Care should be taken not to restrict such operations, nor to require redundant facilities if not necessary to the operation. An example of this is at 1230643, value-added agricultural businesses, which stipulates only commodities produced on site are allowed for permitted by right value-added processing. Without such recognition of dispersed agricultural operations, for example, a farm that grows and harvests popcorn on scattered fields to prevent cross-pollination will not be allowed to bring bulk harvested popcorn to a central location for bagging into retail packages. Regarding 1230628, salvage and junk yards, a salvage yard abutting agricultural or residential property should be fenced with solid masonry, solid wood, or chain-linked fence with opaque slats to provide screening between the two disparate uses. Such fence should be at least six feet in height and constructed to prevent ingress, egress by unauthorized persons or by livestock. Salvaged, junked, and discarded materials shall not be placed in environmentally sensitive areas, nor shall they be buried. The definition of sewage must exempt wastes of animal or vegetable origin that are normal or incidental to agricultural operations, including but not limited to manure in any form, wastewater from washing or otherwise processing raw agricultural products, cleaning of equipment used in agricultural production, et cetera, as long as these processes are carried out on the premises of the farm operation, and those may be scattered or dispersed properties. The definition of rubbish should specifically exclude yard clippings, leaves, unmilled wood, or animal bedding composed of natural materials when these compostable organic waste materials are produced on the premises, brought to the premises for beneficial use, composted, stored, or allowed to decompose naturally. The definition of livestock should reference camelids, ostriches, cervids, and bison to clarify that these are bona fide livestock in agricultural production, not exotic animals or pets. The definition of health hazard is too broad with regard to proliferation of toxic plants. Does this refer only to human toxicity or to animal toxicity as well? Does this refer to toxicity on contact or include things that are toxic when ingested? Acute toxicity only or cumulative toxins? Some horticultural crops are toxic, such as parsonut foliage or raw elderberries.
Natalia, how much more do you have?
Half a page.
Half a page.
Like four or five items.
Can you run through them really quickly?
Yeah, okay. Definition of building appears to include dog houses that are built to resemble conditional homes. That's probably not intended. A minimum size might be helpful. The definition of commercial dog kennel should exclude agricultural working dogs on the premises when they are working with livestock, as well as on the premises where their handlers reside. For example, livestock guardian dogs and herding dogs may be necessary for large livestock operation in numbers exceeding five total. Definition of animal unit should be included. Any references to animals per acre should be changed to animal units per acre based on standard agricultural equivalencies, modified to reflect miniature versions of animals such as hogs or horses. Alliances must be made for duration of grazing, rotational grazing programs, et cetera. Livestock producers, even small-scale or hobby ones, must be allowed to properly manage both their livestock and their pastures according to conventional, sustainable, organic, or other accepted agricultural practices, free from regulatory restrictions on stocking rates. Last one, agricultural information signs should be exempted from the sign codes or specifically addressed. These include state-required agritourism or horse activity liability waiver signs, sensitive crop signs, no-spray area signs, no trespassing, no-hunting signs, as well as signs designating participation in agricultural or environmental programs, such as Century Farms, Monarch Way Station, et cetera.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Charles Yaling, and I think you guys ought to rethink this, the ruling out of the five-acre exemption and like 20 acres and stuff. What I see going on out home there, and I'm involved in production agriculture, there's nobody up here on this board that is, and most of them people, they can't handle five acres. And you're going to say, well, that 20 acres gives some farmer a chance to go out there. Well, they plant some trees here, they got this here, they got there. Nobody wants to drag a piece of equipment in there and dodge this and dodge that. The gates are 12-foot wide and equipment's 16 or better. They, they don't know what they're getting into. They don't need that many acres, most of them. The ones that want it, they're welcome to buy it. But, you know, the biggest thing is, with all these regulations that you guys are coming out here with, where is our rights as landowners? We've been out there the whole time. You know, we've been there the whole time. What we have to do now is buy ground around us for a buffer to make sure we don't have problems. Cows get out, I don't care whose they are. Fences, the water comes through, lays them down. It, it just happens, you know? A bunch of cows runs across guys' place, they don't like you very well, especially if it's on Sunday morning, you know? They're wanting to sleep in. But you really need to kind of think about these people putting them out there with more acres than what they really need. And I know there's some people up on this board know what I'm talking about. They don't take care of it, they can't take care of it. You know, they, they come out there, and I'm not knocking them, I don't blame them. The town's forcing them out, because they can come out there and buy five acres for the same amount of money, they can buy 100, buy a 50-foot lot here in this town, and that's the big problem to start with. And I don't know how you're going to change that, but you can't. I don't think you're going to change your mind here tonight, but I think it needs to be said, and I think you guys need to give it a little more thought, because I know the county don't want it, the developers are pushing against us. Part of the problem is, these five-acre deals have pushed up the price of our ground. When I go to the PRAZERS office, they said, well, that new four-lane highway over there, you're, these five-acre tracks have raised up the price of yours. I says, yeah, but they ain't got a cow lot within 100 feet of their house. You know, it, it, it's changed everything. You guys, you just can't put all these people out here. I know you're watching the clock, but...
As part of my role up here, unfortunately.
I'm not going to change nobody's mind here, I know that. You guys have chewed on this here for several months. I didn't go to the October meetings, because I was sitting in a combine, and most farmers were. It's just not a, the time.
Don't go anywhere, because there'll probably be some questions for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the commission. Looking at the staff report, there are nine items that staff identified that we raised, and I would suggest we go through those. And then we had a couple of additional ones brought up by public comment, that let's try to address those after we get through these. So the first one is about the airstrips. Do we have any, the staff has a recommendation in our packet. Any, any problems with that, any suggestions about it, or?
Mr. Chair, and this was my question, and I don't have any problems whatsoever with what's being proposed for airstrips in the AG district. My only concern was, when I read through the, the permitted uses, it looked as though airstrips were intended to be rezoned to be industrial, and I didn't want that, because they fit very nicely in agricultural zoning. So as long as that's not a concern, I don't have any more concerns about, about that.
So the way it's going to be written, if we recommend approval, would be that it's limited to the agricultural district, period?
And not the industrial district?
It, it can occur in existing industrial areas, if that's, and that's fine, but just all of the, just rural county, or, you know, out on farm airstrips, which people actually do commit, commute to work, some people do, by airplane to, one of my neighbors, anyway, so that they would be able to remain as agriculture. Yeah, thank you.
The second is about the source water overlay districts, and I think the recommendation in there is that the, made by staff, is that they collect information, and it does sound like something that should follow up on, and once something is put together, you can come back as a text amendment. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. Number three was the wholesale sales on hobby farms. I don't remember if it was, was that yours also?
It was me again, yes. And I'm happy with that unless there's some need to incorporate the idea of a dispersed operation. I think that might be something that we just direct Mary to kind of incorporate that, but I'm comfortable, I'm very comfortable.
Okay. Any other comments on that one? Okay. Number four was the notification area, and I think that one's already been changed, that we extended that to half a mile the last meeting, so we just have a list of the section numbers that are affected. Number five, the dwellings in commercial zoning districts, that just looked like that was informational also, so there are no changes there. Number six, this is how, what to do with the AG2. So anyone have any thoughts about that? It was what Mr. Schacter came up and commented on, and, and I believe it also ties in with the last comments we just had about the five acres and such. Where do we limit new rural subdivisions, and how much do we subdivide land, as we have an impact on the agriculture? So anybody want to, have any thoughts?
I have some thoughts. I guess I'd start with saying, we, we did ask for the information to be provided, how many lots are there, because that's something that, without these kinds of changes, we don't have a visual on that, we don't have a handle on it. So I mean, those of us that live out in the rural areas kind of have an understanding that there are a lot of divided lots, a lot of them are already occupied with houses, and a lot of them are available to be built at, at some point, but when you just look, when you drive through or you just look at an area, you don't see that or know that. So I feel like the zoning regulations give us a tool to finally have that discussion. I don't think by doing this that we're at all done with that discussion. I think it's just the starting point, and I think it has to be far more people than the 10 of us and the commission having that conversation. Like I said, I, I think this gives us the tool, but to Mr. Yaley's points, those are very, very important points to be making about land use, land stewardship, how much people can handle if they're moving out to the country for the first time, and also being able to farm around these smaller parcels, even a 20-acre parcel. It, it is incredibly problematic. 40 acres is farm, you can farm around a house on 40 acres, it's really hard to farm around a house on 20. And I had that thought even, you know, when we first read through these, but I also feel like there's so many competing interests about farmers wanting to sell land to subdivide it, to make more money off of it, versus also farmers that want to stay and farm on those acreages. And I just think that this is a good first pass, but we, we won't be done with that discussion at all, and I, I'm not sure what that will look like moving forward, but, but I, I feel like we may do more, and I think there are other discussions to be had. So I guess I just throw it out, that I'm, I'm comf, I'm as comfortable as I think I'm going to be with the, with the acreage requirements until we really get more people involved, and a lot more people that have a stake in, you know, that are landowners and land operators that have a stake in this business, so that's my...
I were being asked to recommend whether to approval, approve the package, so how do we flag that for further discussion?
I think it is well flagged. We've had a lot of discussions about, about that, and certainly when I went to the meetings out in the, in the county, there were people who felt both ways about it, which just shows that I think this is as close to a compromise as we're going to get in the immediate term, and we will need to have more discussions.
So can I ask what those forums would be? What would that look like, further discussion? Do you have any idea what, where that would take place, when it would take place in the zoning process?
I, I don't see holding this up for that, because I think this finally gives us some tools to start looking at, you know, and, and having some maps to have those discussions in the community. I would look at Mary and Tanya and say, I don't know what this next, that next round of discussion looks like, but I, I think the commission should be involved, and the county commission should be involved, and, and more landowners.
Tanya or Mary, would you like to weigh in on how we could possibly facilitate moving forward on that discussion?
You know, I, I don't really have an idea. I think we'd have to put our heads together and come up with some idea about how to formulate what the issue is and, and who to reach out to. I think what this is, is a pretty good means of, today, everything is AG2. Today, you can go out and divide your land, any piece of property could be divided. What we're doing is to say, no, half of that's not able to be divided so much anymore, and if you want to divide it, it's not already small, you have to go through a rezoning, which means you'll see every one of these requests to divide land. And one of the criteria you look at, is it productive or potentially productive farmland? That's one of the criteria we put in the regulations. And so the point is, if it's not potentially productive farmland, it's some sort of piece that's cut off from a bigger farm, maybe topography or something else just doesn't make it suitable for farmland, and a rural water district wants it for a place to put one of their pump stations or their booster stations, it may be appropriate to rezone, and how much we allow depends upon everybody's view. And I think that kind of gives us almost a forum as we go along, your opinion of, is this use needed, or is this better to be kept as farmland? And then in the end, it's the county commission, when do they feel comfortable saying, no more? But I think we want to keep the door open for some, because there are uses, but maybe someone just has to put something, and they don't want to get a whole 20 acres for their pump station, or for whatever use might go out in those areas. So I do agree, I think this is a good way to look at it now, but I think we'd have to do a lot more look before we just close the door on all possible zonings outside the UGA, and all land divisions outside the UGA. I think it, you know, be a good thing for us to think, maybe you have an idea how to...
I think it's a very similar discussion that we have with Plan 2040. It's going to take a lot more meetings and input and research to really kind of get the community's input and take on those kind of items. It might be a text amendment that comes back later, after the county commission initiates it for consideration and goes through that research process to have you kind of look at it as a recommendation item. I think it, it's probably a longer-term item to kind of keep in mind and always kind of have on the forethought, but maybe not necessarily have, you might not have all the data and answers to resolve it right at the moment. I think it's going to have to be a broader public input process that's involved, that may take months to get kind of formulated and off the ground.
I just want to make sure we don't lose this, because a lot of what's happened is with the moratorium, with Plan 2040, with identifying AG soils, with the concerns about the loss of farmland, and we have new strategic goals to protect that, you know, it, it might actually bump some of the items, the work items in Plan 2040, a little higher on the list.
Absolutely, and I think also using Plan 2040 to be the flag is a good way to doing it, because the back of the implementation section would say where we're at in that process, and just kind of let us always know as we're doing our annual reviews, this is still out there and in, in consideration. I think using it as the, the to-do list really serves us well in that.
Chair, could I just ask staff, how would this affect the county zoning and subdivision regulations that are already on the work plan? regulations that are already on the work plan?
If we put an end to Ag Two zoning outside UGA?
Yeah, just the review of this, of this item. I mean, it's already, county zoning and subdivision regulations are already on the work plan. Could this just be added?
So, let...
Tied into it.
Let me speak to that. There are, there are two items on the work plan, which is a later agenda item. The first one is the revision that you are handling this evening, the revision to the county zoning and subdivision regulations. There is a second work plan item for implementation steps that follow that. I think this is something that staff can track, and as we start discussions on what that implementation looks like, what further steps may be necessary, we can make sure that this is on the list, and then start to dovetail and maybe outline what that looks like.
Right, so thanks for that clarification, because that's basically the intention of my question.
Okay. Anyone else?
I, I think as we try on these new regulations, because rezonings, I mean, to subdivide then would also be a rezoning, and that would come to this body, I think we'll start to get a feel for how we need to move forward with that, if we do, or if we've hit it right the first time. So I, I think, I think as we have time and kind of try this on, and try it out in the community, I think we will get the feedback that we need to at least know if we need a different process.
Are there any, well, I'm going to speak to some of the county appointees more expertise on this, about organizations, that if we start to see these rezoning requests, are there specific groups that we might want to make sure hear about this, so we can get some input? Because it goes to the notice requirements, I mean, you know, our agendas are published online, so I guess that would just be a general encouragement to sign up for the emails, to always get the agendas, so you can see what's coming up, and if you have something that's related to the topic, to contact the staff and show up at the meeting, like tonight, which is, some of the comments are raising some very good points and valid questions that are going to take some time to answer. So, I encourage everybody to stay involved with the progress, process. This is not over tonight.
We could ask for items to be advertised through extension or for the conservation district, and that would reach a larger rural audience.
That might be helpful, okay.
Mr. Chair, may I also address the ADU issue that was brought up by Mr. Schacter? So the, the request there was to not allow it in the AG Two, not allow accessory dwelling units, and to that I'd say, so my, my property, I live on an 80-acre farm, but for purposes of getting a mortgage, we had to divide that, and so my house where it sits now would, would be, would be rezoned AG Two, even though it's, I'd be glad to put it back with the larger parcel. So I think there are just enough kind of those funny places that, that I can see where you're going with it, and that the intention is for farm families and for, for aging in place, for kind of our more traditional community out there. I think we'll just kind of, knowing that we don't have a lot of accessory dwelling unit applications, and the ones that I do know about have been on family farms, whether they were small parcels that are part of a, an operation that is dispersed, like we heard about before, or, or not, I don't know, I haven't looked at their lots, but I think that accessory dwelling units in the county have worked really well, I think they've been great options for some people, for exactly what they were intended to be, but I think if we start getting a lot of them, we could make a change, make a change of tack. But I think at the moment, they're doing what they need to do, as far as exactly restricting them, I just think we're going to find some of these parcels that are part of a large family farm, but they just happen to be, this particular lot of it is on a smaller portion of it. So I, I would not want to go that direction at this point, but it's something we can keep an eye on, in my recommendation.
Is it, the application for one of these accessory dwelling units, is that something that just goes through staff administrative approval, or does it, some of those have to come to us?
Just goes to the zoning and codes.
Okay, so if they start to see an increase in those numbers, there's probably information that should get to both the county commission and to the planning commission. Number seven, the Big Springs Community Zoning District. So there was a question, Mary, about what was on the list, and I know that what we have up on the screen was everything that's permitted in the general business remains on that list, and then these were additions that weren't in that change, is that correct?
Right, and I wasn't really sure if he meant like an auto mechanic shop, you know, what he meant by a hobby shop, if he meant like a place to work on vehicles, or was he thinking about welding and...
Sir, if you come up, this is, let's get, let's get just exactly what you're asking about.
All right, so nobody here is familiar with where I live, but I live in Big Springs, right next to Randy Creed. I've restored old cars and just, I guess in the county's clarification, I run a junkyard, scrapyard, as a hobby shop, and as B two, or as in general business, it was actually allowed to have, or in B two, you're allowed to have a junkyard, scrapyard, and they've taken that out, and I'm just making sure, like, we could still work on old cars and restore cars, and still do that kind of stuff, welding and everything else in our district, because they have taken that kind of service out of there. Junkyards and scrapyards, I don't know what you guys can clarify that as, but if you've ever worked on an old car, it takes more than one old car to build another old car. And so when you're taking the second one apart, that's considered a junkyard in your guys' county, and so we're trying to clarify what that is, because I'm sorry to say, like, a 1990 Chevy pickup isn't considered, you know, old to me, but it still takes two of those to make one nowadays, so I'm building a 1930 Ford, it takes three or four cars to build it, so.
Okay, let's see if we can get some clarification on some definitions.
Okay, because that sounds like that would fall under the definition of light equipment repairs and services, and so we don't really specify what you can do to light equipment, we just, it's just a repair and service. So if you normally weld on them, then you could weld, I just wasn't sure that in Big Springs, a welding shop would be a good idea, where you've just welded, and so that's why I was confused, but you can work on vehicles, and so I don't know if we need, that's a good question about if you have old vehicles, or even if you have an auto repair shop, sometimes people don't pick up their vehicles, and you see them, they always end up with vehicles left behind, because I don't think a junkyard, today it is allowed in B two, but only if you get a conditional use permit, or it's allowed in, in different zoning districts. So I think not becoming a junkyard is important, but I understand you have to have more than one vehicle if you're going to restore something, you have to be able to get parts. So we may have to look into that and just make sure that we're addressing the use he wants without actually allowing junkyards, so we may have to work with him, and so I understand for sure what he's doing, but I think he falls under the auto repair, or light equipment repair.
And I would, I would assume that you would define the business based on what a preponderance of the earnings that the business creates from, so if it's a scrapyard or a junkyard, it'd be a pick and pull, or if you're selling used parts, that's, that's what would denote a junkyard, aside from an auto repair restoration or customization shell?
Well, we don't actually ever look at what people earn, we never ask for their, their money, but it's kind of like, what does it look like it is, and Tanya might be able to answer that better, just when you go out, when do you say this is a junkyard, or this is an auto repair shop, because that's kind of, her office makes that determination.
Yeah, Tanya was indicating she wanted some input.
Yeah. So, any of these commercial uses that are in the approved uses that could fall into that, like contractor shop or storage yard, light equipment repair and service, or small-scale industrial use, those are all approved uses, but they still require a site plan, and so when you're site planning it, we can allot for a certain number of vehicles that are abandoned, just parked, just stored, and then if they, say, the site plan's approved for 15 to be stored on the site, that don't run, and then they go to 30 or 45, that's when we step in and say, okay, you've changed the use, you've increased the intensity, and we need to look at this again.
Okay, so with these changes, there's going to be the requirement for some of the properties to have site plans done? I'm getting a head nod affirmative.
Some of them, for instance, this use doesn't have a conditional use permit, if it already had a conditional use permit, it wouldn't have to do anything new, but it doesn't have, I don't believe, and I may be wrong, okay, so you would probably need a site plan for his business use.
Okay.
So that'd be a good step, that'd be one way.
So that would, that would protect both the owner and the general public?
Yeah.
So, okay.
So, I don't, I guess I, my question is, if he, he's already operating that, and it falls under one of the permitted uses, then he won't have to get a site plan, correct?
You have to get a site plan for permitted use. It's not a conditional use permit, but whenever you have a permitted use, like a restaurant or a auto repair, you come in for a site plan, you show where your buildings are, so we make sure you're meeting setbacks. If you need screening, you show where your screening is, you show where your parking is, to make sure you have your required parking.
So if I'm at my house, if I own a property and I'm restoring cars, or I have two or three cars, I need to come in and get a permit to do that, is that what you're telling me?
Yes. Some uses could be home occupations, but vehicle repair, I don't believe is one that can be.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's vehicle repair, it sounds, I mean, he's...
I do it for myself, I have a whole bunch of cars in the garage.
Yeah, it's a hobby, it's a personal hobby.
I have a hobby, but I still sell the vehicles all the time.
But it's business.
Okay. So there's going to be a process, so the, the point would be to keep in contact with the planning staff to make sure that you get to do what you want to do, and have the, the paperwork in place, right? Commissioner Willie?
So is there, is there room for it as a, as a hobby, as opposed to a business, is there, does it matter? I mean, if it's, if he just lives there and does that?
In the zoning regulations, in the home occupations, it has a section where it explains what is a hobby. So if it's a hobby, it's just something you do for your enjoyment, it's not a business, you're not selling things, you're just, it's your hobby, and I haven't read that, there is a section in there where it explains, is it a hobby, or is it a home occupation? So if it's not technically a hobby, auto repair would not qualify as a home occupation. So once you cross that line, and I don't have the regs to look over how it defines hobby, but once you cross that line, then you would just need a site plan, and it just goes, it's an administrative process, make sure you meet all those requirements, and then you...
So the hobby is no site plan, but once you cross over into it being some kind of business, then it requires a site plan?
Either that, or you're a home occupation. If you're a use, for instance, if you're just sowing as a hobby, but then if you start sowing and having customers come to your house, and you're selling things, then you're more of a business, then that would just be a home occupation. But if you're not allowed to be home occupation, then you would go through site planning, as long as you're allowed in your district.
I mean, I'm, I'm assuming there's some sort of line you cross for, like, how do you define business? Is it income you make on that?
As far as between the home occupation and the hobby, I've read that, we don't process that, and I'm not familiar enough to tell you when something crosses the line. I think it's usually when it becomes something you're doing, where you're inviting customers. If you're just having bridge, and you're inviting people over to play bridge, but if you're having people over so you can fix their hair, you know, there's a difference. One's a hobby, one's a business, and I think it's kind of a judgment call. So if someone calls up and says, my neighbor has a lot of people coming over, then you would go talk to them and see what they're doing, and if they're just coming over to play bridge, well then it's a hobby, or if they're just coming over, but if they're coming over and you're fixing their hair, then obviously it should be a home occupation business, because they're customers, not just friends, doing a hobby.
Do we typically just meet with the property owner? We, we usually, I mean, I can't think of an instance where we didn't agree that they're either a hobby or a business, like, when you, when you talk to the property owner and you determine kind of what they're doing, it's usually pretty mutually agreeable between staff and the app, and, and the person of, of what they are.
Anything else? All right. So is everybody in general agreement with the staff recommendations for the newly designated Big Springs Community District? Commissioner Willie?
I, I like it. I think it solved the problem that we started off with about Big Springs just being a unique community within the county, different from other communities that we have, and it just honors who they are and allows for them to maintain that character. So I, I like it, I'm glad we came to that solution, and I'm glad that you had a good meeting, and that, that people were generally in, in agreement and happy with it, so.
I just want to add, before we go on, and I'm sure Commissioner Weaver will add comments if he wants to, since he arranged for the meeting locale and was there, but a lot of thanks go to Mary and Tanya and the staff for arranging that meeting, and for all the community members that came to that meeting. I believe it was a, well, one of the more, most productive meetings I've ever sat through. I think there was a lot of agreement reached, and tensions relieved, and thank you very much for all your hard work on that, on all sides. So I hope that, you know, going forward, this is going to work for everybody in that community. All right, number eight, environmentally sensitive lands protection measures, that looks like it's mostly definitional, any modifications to those definitions or discussions?
No modifications, just a quick point of clarification, I may have been looking at the wrong draft, but in one of the drafts, it said that the Heritage Conservation Council was still the repository for the...
That was in the last draft, the, we didn't post our changes, but we've taken that off. They, they said it's really not in their, their agreement with the county right now, so it's not in their scope of work, so if it's, it may be something they could do, because that way, people want to list it, we'd list it with them, and then we would have that ahead of time, so while that's not possible, they'll just come in and tell us, I'd like to protect my prairie.
Okay, so you, you are the repository?
The lister, yeah.
Okay, that was my basic question.
Okay, anything else on that item? All right. Number nine is mini storage in the LB District. Any discussion on that, or generally accept the staff recommendation? That kind of leaves two other items that were brought up by the public. One is the notice in B two and the changes. I didn't quite understand all the comments. I was more in tune with the Ag comments that came in, believe it or not, than I am with this one, so, do you have any response to those comments?
Yeah, I, I know Walt's comment is basically that he wasn't notified, and people in the B two district weren't notified individually, and we did notify some people individually, but not about the revised zoning regulations. We notified everyone in the village, that we wanted to know, would you be interested in rezoning the village, you know, if we had the district? And we notified people who we found in the county that had commercial or industrial zoning, but they appeared to be agricultural, so we sent them letters and said, once our zoning records get in, would you be willing to let us rezone you? So, we've touched up, reached out to those people early to see, once these go through, then could we do some cleanup and rezone their property so it fits the use? We didn't notify people in the B two district, and basically, we would have to notify everyone, because every district is changing. Only the RT District, the Rural Tourism District, isn't changing, and I believe we only have one property, so that's one person we don't have to notify, but everybody's zoning designation and uses are changing to some degree, and it's with the same with the city regulations when they changed in 2006. Most of the notification happens with the public notices, we do a lot of outreach, we went on the radio programs, we put out flyers, the newspaper interviewed us, so, you know, we, we haven't reached everyone, but we're trying to reach as many people as we can, and I think the legal notices in the paper qualify, you know, it's advertised online, it's on our website, it's on the county's website, so we're doing, and we did have the meetings, we've done a lot of public outreach, trying to notify everyone of it, and there'll still be people that have no idea it's happening, just because we're just not in their, their frame of reference, but, and I think he's concerned because, you know, he would like everyone to be notified, and we did discuss that early on, we thought, well, could we mail out notice to everyone in the county that this is happening? And we thought tax, tax bills go out every year, but then no one's happy to get a tax bill, so I don't know how happy they'd be to be getting our message, hey, you want to change your zoning districts, and so the idea was not to include in the tax bills.
Okay. And that's finally Ms. Luthers' list of items for non-contiguous farming considerations and other things. Is there a way that, you know, those can get to staff, so the possibility of looking over them and having further discussion? Because some of them are intriguing, because I know a lot of people, you know, pick up parcels here and there to try to farm, so.
If she could email her list to us, because that dispersment thing, in the Ag Tourism, we were talking about parcels, and we always said, and adjacent or non-contiguous parcels, because we realize farmers farm a lot of different parcels, and so it was a real wordy way to put it, I like the term she used, and so I think it'd be good to add that as a general definition, and then use it throughout the regulations, wherever we're talking about a farmer's property, because it is, it doesn't always have to be two contiguous parcels. And some of her comments, I think, you know, agriculture is exempt, so we don't specifically say agricultural waste is exempt, because technically, all agriculture is exempt, so, you know, if... So, you know, if we go through and start listing the portions of agriculture that are exempt, then it becomes to look like, well, maybe this isn't exempt. So you'll notice in our regs, we don't discuss a lot about agricultural waste, what kind of animals, I mean, the livestock, that's a limit for the hobby farms. And so she had the idea of adding some of those other species. And if those are livestock species, we could certainly add them. I think it was a, just add them to the list. But it'd be helpful if she would email that to us, because I, I made notes and I don't have everything that she was saying.
Yeah, it would be helpful. It looked like it was being read, so it's probably available.
Yeah.
Can you come up?
The gentleman that made the comment about being out on the combine during all of the meetings and stuff, I have not gotten, as a farmer, I have not gotten a chance to read the draft regulations until night before last.
Okay.
I apologize for being late to the game.
Well, please send those in because I think some of those might be appropriate for a text amendment down the road for cleanup.
Of, of those, the dispersed ag we made mention of, and the other one was changing from livestock numbers to the animal units per acre. That is, there are standards by the state for what constitutes, and that would clarify a little bit in terms of, the only time we use that is to define a hobby farm, but.
It's, I don't think we're prepared to iron out details on that tonight. So is that something to put on the list that-
I think it's an easy change if they just want to make it.
Need to change this on the cleanup list. Okay. All right, I think that went through most things. Any other commissioners have any items in the zoning code they want to specifically discuss? All right, that brings us to, how do we, okay?
Just one thing, I just want to make sure that I did catch a couple Horizon 2020 references in there. I imagine those will all be removed for Plan 2040.
Yeah, I'll look to make sure those are out.
Okay. So now we come to trying to word a motion.
Do you mind if I make a comment first?
Make a comment.
I know it's not, we're not able to reach every single landowner, every single person, but I would say Mary and Tanya have just blown away the standard for trying to get out there. Rural communities are really hard to reach. We're just hard to reach. We don't have the same number of, of just, you know, community events or community outreach kinds of forums. So I think they've done a fabulous job of trying to get the word out there. And, and no, it won't reach everyone, but this is the best effort that I've seen on, on any front for a long time. So I just want to, want to give them credit for, this was a lot of work and they did it in a very short period of time. And we're still getting people to, you know, to, to hear about it, but it's been good work, so.
Yeah, I just add, I mean, we're all fortunate to have a planning staff, both city and county, that are so open to communication with the public. So if there are any questions, contact the staff. I mean, they're always willing to answer questions. It's always been how I've found it for as long as I've lived here, so. All right, so take a stab at a motion.
Hmm, okay. Let's see. I move that we recommend approval of the revised zoning regulations for the unincorporated Douglas County and the associated revised subdivision regulations based on the staff reports that have been given to us. Close enough?
Do we need to add?
And forwarding to the county commission for their approval, with recommendation for approval.
Incorporating the recommendations in our suggestions?
Sure.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Carter. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes ten to zero. Yeah?
Do we need to make a motion to extend our meeting?
It's only ten fifteen.
We got another fifteen minutes before we get through four.
We can do this.
We're going to push through.
It's a goal, it's called a goal plan.
Item number five, consider initiating a text amendment to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code regarding proposed changes to the language and terminology related to requirements to plat property located within the city limits.
This is a request to initiate an amendment that staff has identified. We've kind of added it on a little bit. We looked at part of our cleanup text amendment initially, some of those items. This is to help clarify some differences in the code about what a permit is, what does the permit trigger in regards to a major subdivision versus a minor subdivision, and just trying to get the language streamlined and clear so both staff and the public understand when is a minor subdivision required versus a major subdivision required. So Catherine had a memo in there that kind of outlined some of the sections we identified. We think there might be a few more as we look at it that might need to be added into the list and just kind of get it up to speed on that item. But this would just be the beginning of it. We'd bring it back to you for consideration and because it is in the joint subdivision regulations, both the city commission and the board of county commissioners would take a look at it as part of their review. So this would just get the process started.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if this is generally a public comment item, but we'll open the floor to any public comment on initiation of this text amendment. Anybody want to comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the commission. Any discussion or motion to initiate this text amendment? Commissioner Sinclair?
Do you have a question?
No.
I was going to ask you to make a motion.
Yeah, let's do it. Go ahead.
Well, one of you did.
Okay. I move that we initiate a text amendment TA dash twenty dash zero 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 three to the Land Development Code to clarify plat requirements.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Payton. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Passes ten to zero. Item number six, consider initiating a text amendment to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code to add accessory dwelling units in the RS five zoning district.
So this is a text amendment that we sort of alluded to when we were talking about the affordable housing and the density bonus. This particular text amendment is a direct result of language in Plan 2040 as well as a number of other documents that have recently been considered by either the city commission or by the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. You will be receiving a lot of public comment from it. This is an item that has been discussed before in front of the commission, so we, we are expecting those similar comments and concerns to be voiced again as we come forward. But it's probably appropriate to have that discussion as we continue moving through the discussions of affordable housing options that are suggested for the community.
Thank you, Sandy. Again, not generally a public comment item, but any members of the public that would like to speak about the initiation of this text amendment or perhaps offer some views that could be taken into consideration as the text amendment is drafted, you can come up to the podium, sign in, state your name, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tressa Hill, seven oh five Tennessee Street. I'm representing Old West Lawrence Association. We are against accessory dwelling units. We buy a home or make major improvements and expect some continuity of our investment. To change from having a single family to allowing multiple families is a major change. For Lawrence inner city, it means student housing, Airbnbs, loud parties, crime, litter, and a material decrease in home values are nest egg. I moved it to Old West Lawrence thirty-five years ago. My house had been on the market two years. Who wanted to live with boarding houses? Homes where the owners couldn't maintain them, so they had to have renters. We often found transient drunken neighbors trying to enter our home. Evidence of somebody sitting against our front door at night, smoking ten cigarettes. You get the picture. Our home price was reduced to rock bottom. Unlike now, this was not a neighborhood where anyone was, wanted to buy a broken home and invest in extensive renovations. It took decades of effort to change things. One of the primary agents of change was single-family zoning. Owners were then comfortable with a kitchen remodel, a bathroom remodel, but nothing that would involve multiple rooms. That was too much risk. Today, our renovations are extensive. Currently in Old West Lawrence and other inner-city neighborhoods, our city infrastructure has not been adequately maintained or improved. For example, we experienced five major rain events last year that overwhelmed the stormwater system which flowed onto our streets. Basements took on water and Owl had one flooded home that had to be gutted. Adding a separate structure means less ground to absorb water. Adding a basement ADU when water is known to come through the floor or walls is unsanitary and unsafe. Studies have shown that as much, that as the percent of rentals increase, property values decrease. Look at Oriad, where less than eight percent of the homes are owner occupied. Who wants to live with rentals, including students and Airbnb and their parties, where you clean up their plastic cups, trash, and use condoms? Who wants to invest their nest egg there? We have invested heavily into our homes. Are you going to reimburse us when our values decrease due to your actions? Single-family zoning without ADUs has been a major positive impact to Owl. But economically, we are a diverse neighborhood. Most homes, large and small, have been renovated and values have increased significantly for all who is going to want a home with multiple ADUs encircling their property. ADUs are a change of use. Leave RS five as one of the two true single-family zones in Lawrence without ADUs.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Goins. I am here to request you initiate the text amendment to add the RS five zone to the list of areas allowed to have accessory dwelling units as outlined in Plan 2040. If I understand the process correctly, there will be other moments for me to present my arguments for adding RS five, but tonight, my opportunity is to simply ask you to initiate that process. As you are aware, Plan 2040 is a binding document outlining the community's aspirations and expectations for our future growth and development. While there are around fifty items in the residential growth and development section, only eight of those are action items that actually made it to the implementation appendix D. And implementation six point three is to expand opportunities to create accessory dwelling units in all Lawrence RS zoning districts. It is important to remember that this is not a one or two neighborhood issue. RS five zoning lots are scattered throughout Lawrence. As a former teacher, I think in terms of neighborhood schools, ten of our fourteen elementary school neighborhoods have RS five zoned lots. This includes Far West Lawrence Langston Hughes, Southwest Lawrence Sunflower Elementary, South Lawrence Broken Arrow, Southeast Lawrence Prairie Park. A little further north, we have Kennedy. We have East Lawrence, New York, Woodlawn. We have Pinckney, Sunset Hill, and Cordley. These are the same communities that helped create the Lawrence vision for the next twenty years. So please follow that lead to vote to initiate the text amendment that Sandy presented tonight to open the discussions for allowing accessory dwelling units in all of our Lawrence neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Almond, Brook Creek Neighborhood. Last October, against the objections of Brook Creek Neighborhood Association, the city commission chose to double the possible density of our neighborhood within the already densest part of town. While the west side of Lawrence averages two to four units per acre, Brook Creek currently is at an optimal eight units per acre, predominantly five thousand square foot RS five lots, twenty-two hundred square foot mobile home lots, and the balance, seven thousand square foot RS seven lots. The double density ordinance from last October propels Brook Creek towards sixteen units per acre. And now city staff wants you to add ADUs to RS five zoning and hasten that potential. We oppose the staff initiation of this text amendment. Spreading density equally around town is a goal of Plan 2040. It's also a policy of the housing authority and it's the stated intent of the city commission. Some believe that by including the SUP as a double density requirement in RS five, will deflect the density pressure to the west. But with east side lots typically five thousand dollars cheaper, developers won't blink an eye at paying the seven hundred and twenty-five dollar SUP fee as just another cost of doing business. Even though you may think that an SUP will prevent undue density on the east side, you cannot deny that adding ADUs to RS five will absolutely accelerate density on the east side. Ninety-five percent of the RS five lots are east of Michigan Street. Apologies to the previous speaker who was wrong. The ADU text amendment flies in the face of the goal, the policy, and the intent to spread density equally around town. Although Plan 2040 density goal is good, staff is misguiding you with both of these density tools that will not spread it equitably around town. What actually is limiting density from going west and which you have no control over are private covenants, which overrule zoning law. Covenants, of course, are on the west side. Mr. Ron Gochet, who championed double density and who is sequestered in the center of the Albemarle, knows that he's well protected by his protective covenants from any of us east side riffraff moving into his neighborhood. The masters at Albemarle protective covenants require a minimum two-story house size of twenty-four hundred square feet plus a required five hundred square foot double bay garage, hardly what you call a tiny home. Staff essentially abdicated their ability to address covenants, thus leaving density to seek its own level, which is the cheap side of town. The city needs to step back, reassess other tools than density to achieve affordability. The double density tool and the RS five ADU tool will not bring the intended, the intended results, unfortunately. So please, direct staff to research how to increase the use of ADUs where they're currently allowed and reject this addition of ADUs to RS five. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Mr. Chair.
Could I have a motion to extend the meeting for fifteen minutes?
So moved.
Second? Second by Commissioner Struckoff. All those in favor? Ten to zero? Okay.
My name is Karen Cresson and I live at six thirty Ohio. I fully endorse the comments made by my neighbor Tressa. I would add another investment, which I know for a fact many neighbors besides me have undertaken over the years, the removal of secondary upstairs kitchens. Vestiges of the bad old days when Old West Lawrence was full of boarding houses and duplexes. None of these investments of nest eggs would have been- None of these investments of nest eggs would have been, and others, I think she maybe has taken a little bit out of her, but all of the things we did, the additional kitchens, the remodeled bathrooms, all of that stuff, is what I'm referring to, these nest eggs. It's our nest egg that we invested, would have been a wise investment over the years but for the city's committed policy against adding apartments in Old West Lawrence. We relied on it. Now that commitment is about to vanish, and it feels like a taking without just compensation. There seems to be a trend in the urban planning profession to promote ADUs everywhere. Advocates consistently deny that the effect of such units constitutes turning houses into duplexes. I disagree. Also, a common justification is to provide affordable housing. I would ask, are needs met by offering a low-income mother and her children a musty apartment in the basement of a 100-year-old house? Are they met by providing an elderly person an apartment upstairs above a garage? Are they met by offering a person who uses a wheelchair a backyard tiny house with limited chair turnaround space because the house is so small? So I submit that if my nest egg is subject to a taking for the purpose of affordable housing and ADUs are not appropriate to meet the need, then extending the ADU ordinance to my neighborhood to meet the need for affordable housing is foolish and capricious. My time here is limited, so I cannot present my concerns regarding other issues such as: RS5 areas are not examples of urban sprawl; indeed, they are the opposite, dense enough already; parking and aging infrastructure impacts must be considered; installing an ADU in a basement can be a ruse to get around the maximum occupancy limit for the house, especially for student rentals; corporate landlords must be explicitly barred from qualifying for the owner occupancy requirement; if ADUs are to be benign and of limited impact, the design and size limits of the existing ordinance must be strictly enforced and not be waived by variances; neighbors must be given notice of ADU applications and size and design variance requests. I can elaborate on all of these, just not tonight. In light of the possibility that this is a taking with attendant constitutional considerations of fundamental fairness and due process, I urge the Commission to postpone this change to the status quo to allow neighborhood input. It would be appropriate for neighborhood representatives to participate in city study sessions about ADUs and RS5. Land should also be included. That's Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission. This is simply to initiate the text amendment, to have more discussion, actually. So, any discussion, motions? Do I have a motion? Commissioner Sands?
Understanding that the public comment tonight wasn't fully in favor of it, but I think it's necessary to initiate it so that we can get the full force of public participation behind it, I'd like to make a motion to consider initiating a text amendment, TA 1900602, to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code to add accessory dwelling units in the RS5 single-dwelling residential zoning districts.
Have a second? Second by Commissioner Sinclair. Any further discussion?
Can we just clarify again that this is not making the change? This is just allowing staff to do some research, meet with the public, have the public weigh in, and then bring it back here for a full and possibly interesting discussion.
Yes, this is just the start of a full discussion. It could have work sessions. It could have who-knows-what as it goes along, but this is just to start a process and open it up to a community discussion. I would encourage everybody that made a comment tonight, I saw everyone was written down, if you could get those to staff so they can be kept a part of the record, and the concerns can be addressed as we go forward with this. I would like to see that happen. So, with all of that, all those in favor of initiating a text amendment? 10-0. All right. That brings us to item number seven, receive planning work plan. That's a mouthful. And forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners and City Commission.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm trying to make this quick in the late hour. This is really a continuation of the work that you've done at your November retreat, so these items should not be a surprise to you. And what we are doing is, this will be the first time that we've done this in a number of years. I think, looking back, it might have been 2011 or 2012 was the last time that we did a planning work plan. That was when we embarked upon Plan 2040 and worked on trying to get, go through that process. We put the work program on hold because that was such a large endeavor. At this point, we are trying to reintroduce the planning work program. It will be part of the larger Planning and Development Services Work Program, our other divisions that are located within our department. Because the Planning Division is 1-6 county-funded, that is one of the reasons why you all are seeing it, and I've separated it from the other items that are just city items that are not planning-related. We would like to get your input and feedback on that planning work program. It takes into account that prioritization exercise that you did at your November retreat, along with some of the other initiatives that we know are happening. Keep in mind that, as we've already discussed tonight, that some of the items that are on there are a little general in nature at this point. They will be, need to be flushed out as we start to work through the work program. The work program is really a delicate balance of resources within our department. It also takes into account our number-one priority, which are processing the day-to-day inquiries by customers, applicants, general citizens, and also all of the applications that we process. Those really take precedence. This is what helps to fill out that other time. There are other things that we try and allot for throughout the year, whether it's something that comes up at a planning commission meeting where you all ask for some more research on something that isn't on the work plan, or the City Commission directs us to do something different throughout the year. We try to take that into consideration and allow a little bit of time also for that. So because of that, you'll see that I've tried to break it out into almost three years. In addition to that, there are some projects on the list that don't have a year associated with them. And at this point, what we'd be looking for is input from you on trying to prioritize those, not necessarily slating it for a particular year, but prioritizing those items that aren't slated for a year at this point. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
So I should also mention, so this will go forward as the planning work plan to the Board of County Commissioners next. After that, it'll be incorporated into the entire Department Planning and Development Services work plan, which will go to the City Commission. And we do plan on doing this annually.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Amy, are you asking us to prioritize the neighborhood plans, or are there other pieces that you want us to look at?
I'm asking for input on the entire work plan, and specifically, staff would like some guidance from all of our commissions in helping to prioritize what is not slated at the bottom of the list. I believe it's in gray.
Which are just the four neighborhood plans in gray on, is that right?
Three neighborhood plans and potentially an overlay district, but yes, four neighborhood issues. And we would like some help in trying to prioritize those so that we can eventually get those on a work plan and see where we can fit them in.
Okay.
Thoughts?
I don't want to choose.
Can I ask what other factors, other than the year that's given, and I know we had some of this in our retreat, but other, what you see are other critical features of the request for neighborhood plans besides the year that they were submitted? I mean, what would be another consideration for our ranking?
I think that all four of the neighborhood plans came out of requests from neighborhoods that were facing development pressure. I think a lot of the circumstances for the requests were very similar. And I know that that may be a difficult task, given the hour. This is by no means the end of the conversation. This work plan will be a revolving work plan. We clearly, at this point, do not have the capacity to fit one of these plans in in 2020 and right now, probably not in 2021. Therefore, it could also be food for thought. So when it says the year of the neighborhood request, can you also tell us when the last time that plan was updated? Not off the top of my head, but we can include that in the future.
Would this be something that land would weigh in on, or would that just be too controversial to put to that body?
I would be optimistic, but that's not going to help tonight. So they don't have a meeting for another four weeks. I missed Chadwell last week.
To me, it makes sense that we would address them in the order that they were received. I don't know why we'd go out of that, but I don't know.
The development pressures on each of these neighborhoods that Amy mentioned are different, I guess. I think perhaps, in general, maybe perhaps the creation of a new plan might be prioritized over those neighborhoods that do have plans and are waiting for revisions. That's just one thought. And is the Centennial Neighborhood Plan, would that be a creation or a revision?
I believe that is a creation.
Correct. That is not a plan or knowledge.
Indian Hills doesn't have one either, do they? Pinckney does have an old one, and East Lawrence has got various versions of things.
And then I would, it makes it harder to decide because East Lawrence is both Brook Creek and Warehouse Arts District. Some of those neighborhoods do have design guidelines. For instance, Penn Street area does have a design guideline in place, but some of the other neighborhoods over there could probably use some design guidelines, given the pressures they're facing. Again, prioritizing creation of new plans versus the overlay district, which is, I presume, in response to the sense that there is heightened pressure over there. That was my preliminary thoughts on that. I would also like to see, on a separate note, the Southern Development Plan was something we talked about during our 2040 discussions as something that is really kind of skeletal document. I would like to see some discussion of what we're going to do with our riverside and whether our riparian and river channel protections are going to, how they're going to play out down there.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last one?
Southern Development Plan?
I got that one. Riparian?
We're talking about floodplain protections and things like that are an important part of our current discussions.
As part of the southern?
As part of the southern.
So Waukesha floodplain?
Yeah.
Gotcha. And there's one item in particular on the list that is updating and revising the floodplain regulations that is on the work program already. In addition to that, for city, meaning if a property were to be annexed, also you'll see the stream buffer ordinance.
Thank you.
So we need to pick an order tonight? Is that what you're telling us? No. The general thoughts tonight are great. We will forward the work plan as it is to the County Commission unless you have any other changes that you would like to make for their input and consideration. I think that this is something that does need to be on the radar because we will need to probably set those priorities next year. As I said, the capacity for the next year or two is probably filled. We wouldn't be able to get to them in that timeframe anyway, so.
Can I have a motion to extend for 10 minutes?
So moved.
Second? Second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, it passes.
I would.
I'm sorry, continue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where were we?
I was just going to say, with respect to Commissioner Butler's observation about first come, first served, essentially, my bias would be new plans over revised plans. I mean, the 2013, we've got, you know, creation of the Indian Hills Neighborhood Plan versus the update of the Pinckney Neighborhood Plan. I would tend to side with creation of Indian Hills over update to Pinckney. But then, what, Pinckney's 2013 versus Centennial Neighborhood Plan 2016? Were you going to say something, Ms. Willie?
Sorry.
That's okay, please.
I guess it might be worth asking the neighborhoods just each for a proposal. Just tell us what the pressures are so that we can make a decision. I don't feel like we have anywhere near the information we'd need to prioritize these, and it'll mean, you know, a couple of years difference for some of them, so I think that might be something we could ask land to draft just a very brief statement of what they need for each neighborhood might, would need if they have, I mean, do all of these have neighborhood organizations already? I assume these are all ones that have organized neighborhood associations, Mr. Chair?
They're each a group of applicants.
We've had, we've had contacts with people over the years, yes.
You could send out, just tell us what you see as your current, the current pressures on your neighborhood, send it out electronically and see what we get back.
And I also think that we can, we can work on making contact with them this year and trying to get that information in preparation for the work plan coming back next year.
In which case, I move we approve the work plan and forward it to the County Commission.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Butler. All those, any further discussion?
Just one, one point, I just want to encourage staff to remind commissions to remain mindful of the priorities set forth in the work plan, just so it doesn't get sidetracked and we don't have a whole, you know, like you said, the last one was 2011. And this is an annual thing, we probably need to be, we need to be reminded about that. So, thank you.
I think you may have one member of the public that would like to say something.
Can you do it fast? Yeah, we got, they've approved us for another six minutes. Thank you. You got, you got two minutes, Michael.
I'm speaking, Michael Allman, speaking for the Sustainability Action Network, but also indirectly for the Healthy, Built, and Environment Work Group. Those two organizations, and occasionally, like the Health Department or maybe Lawrence Association or neighborhood reps, have been working on the item which here would be listed as multimodal connectivity. But two years ago, 2018, we started an initiative for revising the subdivision regulations, not just a multimodal connectivity thing, but broader. So I would like you to consider expanding the scope of that particular work item, and this may be something that, I've talked with Amy Miller briefly, and we're going to talk more, maybe it's something that she'd be interested in, but what we had in mind was not just connectivity of a bike lane here to a bike lane there, but revising the subdivision regulations, which right now have, I think, a total of two times the word bicycle in them in its entirety, so that the subdivision regulations- So that those subdivision regulations will require, as a new development is proposed and developed, just like developers are required to put in sidewalks, they would be required to put in bikeways. Right now, there's no provision at all. This would forego the possibility that 20 years later, we would have to come back like we are now and retrofitting those subdivisions that didn't have bikeways put in the first place. So that was one of the things we were thinking of. Another is that it's a time when the subdivision regulations could change the standards of street design. Most, many, many communities around the country are changing the standards to narrow the normal street, the residential street, from what we have like 31 feet now to 27, or even 25 or 22, with or without parking, depending on if there's parking or not. Narrower streets.
Mr. Chair.
Are calmer streets, they're more walkable streets, they're more bikeable streets, and they save money, less construction, less maintenance. So we're thinking of this in broader terms. I just wanted to bring that.
We're not working on any of these items at the moment.
Do you have a package that you can get to staff so? Yeah, yeah, and I've talked to the city manager already. Yeah, none of this is going to get to us for a while. We just wanted you to be apprised of that, too. My other request was move it from 2021 up to 2020. I mean, we've been working on it for two years already, so there's already some groundwork established, but anyway, that's, that's another issue. I don't think we have much control over that. Some of these things are huge, and they've been in progress, and they have the highest priority. And if the city or county initiate them, that's what gets done first, so. I'll thank you. Take it to the city to see if you can get them to do it.
Mr. Chair, we should probably offer, if there are any other public comment.
Yeah, is there any other public comment? No. All right, so this is a non-action item, so do you have kind of what you need, or do you need a motion on this, since it's just, we're receiving it, so?
Yes, and I think what would be appropriate is a motion of your recommendation in forwarding it to the County Commission and City Commission for consideration.
Okay, do I have that motion?
I think we had a motion in a second.
There's a motion on the table.
Until somebody had a comment. All right, all those in favor of sending this on to the City and County Commission? Ten zero. All right, any miscellaneous or old business? All right, seeing none, I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Second? All those in favor of adjourning? Ten zero.